Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 14, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. This meeting can be viewed on local cable charter, Cable Channel 6, and AT&amp;T Uverse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, glendalecalifornia.gov, by scrolling at the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming," which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. The number is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during this meeting. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Agajanian, and I will lead the flag salute. Please repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. We pray and give thanks for the many blessings bestowed upon us and ask for continuous guidance in all aspects of our lives, especially the leadership of our city during these most difficult times. As our new mayor and city council conduct the business of the city and the community, we pray that all the decisions made this evening be in accordance to our shared values and principles, and we extend goodwill towards all. We pray for the safety of those on the front lines of fighting this pandemic, and we pray for our city's health. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Before I continue, I want to thank, last time I was not able to read every name or mention every name who are here helping us, I want to thank you, Yasmin Beer, City Manager, Mike Garcia, our City Attorney, Rubik Golanyan, Assistant City Attorney, John Tatalian, Deputy City Manager, and Silvio Lanza, Fire Chief, is here. Our Card Povlidis Police Chief is here, Jason Bradford, Chief Information Officer is here, Hago Povsepian, Assistant Chief Information Officer is here, Aram Agajanian, Record Administration Analyst is here, Lizet Paglusoto, I hope I said it right, IT Applications Manager is in here, Craig Wada is here, Senior Telecommunication Specialist, Angie Mesrakhani, Administrative Assistant is here, Anahit Magardichan, Administrative Assistant is here. I see they were here yesterday, however, Rob Taussen, Broadcast Coordinator, and Brian Halloran, Broadcast Coordinator, they were here yesterday, but they are not here today. Okay. Now, so we are agenda item now, presentation and appointments. Yes, we are at that position now, and for the appointment, I would like to nominate Mr. Greg Asturian to the Civil Service Commission. If we can make a note of it, please. Now, I would like, do I go to next item, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, we're going to go a little forward again, or backwards. The agenda for the April 14, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, April 8, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The next item would be, Mayor, since you read presentations and appointments, the agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, April 21, 2020.
Okay. So this is the proclamation that I would like to read.
Mayor Agajanian? I think...
Yes?
Presentation.
Presentation first?
Yeah, agenda preview. So Mr. Golanyan will handle that for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. The regular housing and City Council meetings for April 21, 2020 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, April 28, 2020. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now, I read the proclamation that I have in here. Whereas across the nation, in times of intense personal crises and community-wide disasters, the first access point for those seeking all types of emergency assistance and homeland security information is the 911 Center. And whereas the Glendale Police and the Verdugo Fire Communications Centers that receive these calls have emerged as the first and single point of contact for persons seeking immediate emergency assistance and are expected to multitask under emergency conditions with compassion, accuracy, and professionalism throughout the year. And whereas this week, celebrated annually, honors the thousands of men and women who respond to emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and render lifesaving assistance to the citizens, residents, and visitors to the city of Glendale. Now, therefore, I, Rajaginian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April 12 to 18, 2020 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Glendale, and congratulate the dedicated and hard-working members of the Glendale Police and the Verdugo Fire Dispatch Communications Center for their ongoing outstanding service rendered to the community. This is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And I would present this to our Chifa Police and Chifa Fire.
Yep.
My mask. I have to put my mask. Look. This way. See, I'm going on my eyes. This is one.
Got it. I have no idea. I got it. We're good. Let's move on, gents.
Now, we have one more. We have one more. I guess Library Director is not here, but...
He's on the telephone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So this is proclamation, whereas across the nation, in times of intense personal crises and community-wide disasters, the first access point for those seeking all types of emergency assistance and homeland security information is the 911 Center. And whereas the Glendale Police and the Verdugo Fire Communications Center that receive these calls have emerged as the first and single point of contact for persons seeking immediate emergency assistance and are expected to multitask under emergency conditions with compassion, accuracy, and professionalism throughout the year. And whereas this week, celebrated annually, honors the thousands of men and women who respond to emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and render lifesaving assistance to the citizens, residents...
Do we have the wrong one?
Do we have the wrong one? Okay. And visitors to the city of Glendale. Now, therefore, I, Rajaginian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April...
Yeah, we're going to do this one.
Oh.
You gave, yeah, you already read that one.
All right. So we do this one. I'm sorry for that. Okay, proclamation, whereas the Library Arts and Culture Department will join libraries around the United States to celebrate National Library Week, April 13 till 18, 2020. And whereas this year's theme, Find Your Place at the Library, takes on new meaning that the library has been transformed into an accessible virtual space and thousands of hours of e-content to keep Glendale residents informed, entertained, and learning. And whereas the city of Glendale recently affirmed the Central Library as a green business, a designation aligned with stringent State of California standards, making the Central Library the first public building and the largest building in the city to be declared as such. And whereas Library Workers Day on April 14, 2020 recognizes the unique contribution of library workers. And whereas Library Giving Day on April 15, 2020 is an excellent time to make a financial contribution to support the newly formed Glendale Library Arts and Cultural Trust, a result of the merger of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library and the Glendale Library Foundation. And whereas the Friends of the Glendale Public Library has faithfully served the community of Glendale for over 30 years and provided hundreds of thousands of dollars and countless volunteer hours to support library service in Glendale, and has renewed its commitment via this merger. And whereas the Glendale Library Foundation has also provided hundreds of thousands of dollars to support library services in Glendale and has also renewed its commitment via this merger to form the trust. As its first act, the trust is funding a forthcoming mailer that includes a free library card to over 77,000 Glendale households so that they may access the library virtually. And whereas Library Volunteer Recognition Day is April 16, 2020, when we pause to celebrate the power of all the volunteers who serve our libraries, such as the Arts and Culture Commissioners and the Brand Associates, who for 50-plus years have supported art exhibitions, musical performances, and dance recitals, and at the Brand Library and Art Center. And now, therefore, I, Rajaginian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April 13 till 18, 2020 as National Library Week in Glendale, California, and invite Glendale residents to visit Library Arts and Culture online through its website, glendelac.org, I guess, to find ebooks, e-magazines, and e newspapers, to read, e-music, and e-movies to stream, and online classes with which to learn. National Library Week. And I signed under Rajaginian, the mayor. Oh, you are here now. I'm presenting...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and city colleagues. So much going on at the library. I appreciate you covering all that. Also, I wanted to say hello from afar to my city colleagues and our audience watching this broadcast. My name's Gary Schaper, Director of Library Arts and Culture. You know, as we mark this year's National Library Week, please join us in celebrating as we honor the efforts of staff and volunteers who are working tirelessly to help our community in these unprecedented times. These include today's Library Workers Day, when we acknowledge the unique contributions of our library workers, such as my colleague Guillermo Garcia, a board member of the Glendale Latino Association, who suggested recently that the library convert Little Free Libraries to Little Free Food Pantries. And I'm happy to report that the library now works with community organizations, such as the Glendale Latino Association, which named Glendale Library Arts and Culture the 2020 Organization of the Year, the Kiwanis Club of Glendale, Glendale Sunrise Rotary, Pastor Melissa Scott, Ph.D. of the Glendale Faith Center, and the Salvation Army, who have all kept the Little Free Food Libraries stocked with non-perishable food around the city. We also celebrate our children's librarians, who are busy filming and posting Read- aloud storytimes for children, along with other staff who are making instructional videos, and staff at the Brand Library and Art Center for sending out an e-newsletter twice a week called "Branded Home," which is full of links to inspiring art tours you could take from home, do-it-yourself crafts, and staff-curated music playlists. Information on all of this can be found, as the mayor suggested, at our library location. Our e-library actually is glendelac.org. Library staff are here for the community, answering phones and responding to emails and questions, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., at our number, 818-548-2021, or at libraryinfo@glendaleca.gov. Mr. Mayor, thank you for sharing about Library Giving Day, guest tomorrow, Wednesday, April 15. Folks can make a contribution to the new Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust. In order to help offset the cost of new digital resources, we are adding weekly, in, again, these unprecedented times, they simply can go to the web address, glac.info/support. And last, I'd also like to celebrate our volunteers, like Glendale residents and longtime literacy tutors, Richard Clark, Martha Charleston, Derek Graham, Alicia Lareda, and Carol Schwab, who share the greatest gift of all with Glendale residents, the ability to read. Our adult literacy volunteer tutors have recently started holding online tutoring classes. And speaking of great volunteers, a special volunteer, Hoover High School student Donna Choi, who volunteered at the library's first-ever team fair last year, and she later submitted the winning design for our new team library card. So the city is really pulling together volunteers, staff, and we really appreciate everyone helping us celebrate National Library Week this week. So thanks again, and thanks so much.
Thank you very much. What's next, please?
Next would be census updates.
Christine Powers will provide us with an update. Thank you, Christine.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, councilmembers and staff. Christine Powers with the City Manager's Office to give you a brief update on the census. So people across the United States were able to self-respond starting March 12, 2020, and as we know, they are able to go online at my2020census.gov. They can call several phone numbers, depending on the language they want to call their responses with. And beginning last week, those who hadn't responded online or by phone are able to receive a paper census at home and complete the census by mail. Now, census efforts are ongoing, and people still have the ability to take the census. Census day is April 1, and that's a reference point, that's not a deadline date. So anyone who hasn't taken the census yet still has time. As of yesterday, the census self-response rates are as follows. For the United States, we're at 48.6%, and as you can see, California fares a little bit better than the overall country, and Glendale is doing better than the state at 52.4%. We still have a long way to go to get to 100, but we are well on our way. Now, the Census Bureau has made adjustments to census operations due to the COVID outbreak. They have temporarily suspended 2020 census field data collection activities. Training of census staff has been suspended, and as of now, nothing is occurring until June 1. Once field offices do come back online, all interactions will include recommended personal protective equipment and proper social distancing practices. Now, last week, we were all under the impression that the final census count was still due to the president on December 31. And while this is technically still the case, we learned just yesterday that the Census Bureau is seeking statutory relief from Congress for an additional 120 calendar days to deliver the final apportionment counts. So under this plan, should it move forward, the Census Bureau would extend the window for field data collection and self-response from July 31 to October 31. And the apportionment counts could be delivered to the president by April 30 of 2021 instead of the current December 31 deadline. And it would allow redistricting data to be delivered to the states no later than July 31, 2021, as opposed to the current deadline of March 31. These additional 120 days would help us get the most complete count, but it is ultimately up to Congress to make this decision. Our staff will continue to monitor this effort, and should this extension be granted, we will adjust our outreach accordingly. Now, our strategic goals do remain the same, given the certain, given this situation, and that is to raise census awareness among all residents and to capture the most complete and accurate count. As far as media and advertising, we continue with our media and advertising, including multilingual social media posts and targeted ads. We recently launched the Census Challenge, where people take the census, take a screenshot of their confirmation page, and send it out to other people, tag them, and get them to take the census as well. We've created a multilingual PSA, which we'll watch at the end of this presentation. This is running on GTV6 and has also been shared with local media outlets to run as an advertisement. We are advertising in local and foreign language newspapers and news sites. We have our banners on light poles throughout the city, along with a banner across the College Bridge with our Glendale Counts campaign and website. Our Glendale Counts website, which is up, features information about the census, answers frequently asked questions, and allows the public to contact us with census-related questions. The entire site is available in English, Spanish, and Armenian. Last year, we had developed a Glendale Completes Count Committee, and through this partnership, we helped connect our schools, churches, and local organizations to the Census Bureau. We are working with the Census Bureau staff to hold our first virtual Complete Count meeting before the end of this month. And now that we've worked out the various changes we're making to our outreach plan as a result of COVID-19, we can communicate this plan to our committee and provide them with the tools to help support this outreach. A few weeks ago, we sent out a multi-page, multilanguage mailer with important census information to every household in Glendale, and prior to this, we had provided utility inserts to every GWP customer about the census. Now, as far as the adjustments we've made to Glendale's outreach, as far as media advertisement and outreach, we have increased that, and that's because we're utilizing savings that have come with the cancellation and modification of other outreach activities. We've increased our media advertisement and outreach as people seek news outlets from home. Part of our original plan involved providing laptops and telephones at questionnaire assistance kiosks. These were going to be staffed by trained city employees to help encourage and provide the community with the means to participate in the census, and they were going to be set up at libraries, community centers, and at Arts Ah Paseo. This element of the plan has been canceled due to the safer-at-home order. Now, prior to the COVID-19 outbreak, we were not allowed to conduct direct outreach to households by phone. And recognizing the need to shift to remote and digital outreach, we received word at the end of March that we are now permitted to engage in phone banking and text messaging as an approved activity as a city. So given this, staff is in the process of securing a company that provides phone banking and text messaging software, and we're acquiring databases to contact Glendale residents. We are training multilingual staff in the coming week with the goal of beginning to make phone calls and send text messages the week of April 27. And with the databases that we acquire, we will be able to target our hard-to-count census tracts. As far as our volunteer day, we were initially organizing a volunteer day, where members of the community would come out on a Saturday to engage in door-knocking and encourage residents to participate in the census. But we modified this and instead came up with a virtual volunteer campaign, and we're calling it Contact 20 for the 2020 Census. So with many people home, we launched a simple portal on our Glendale Counts website in which people can sign up and commit to reaching out to 20 of their friends and family members, with the goal of not only getting them to complete the census, but then to go and reach out to 20 people themselves. Once they sign up, they'll receive a fact sheet from us that gives them some simple information about taking the census, and will include information that'll help them answer questions that people might ask them. And this concludes the update. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have after we watch our PSA. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any question? I guess I have one, online, line one.
Mr. Mayor, if we can watch the PSA real quickly, and then we will move on to the questions.
Okay.
I count.
And we count too.
I count.
Because in Glendale, everybody belongs and everybody counts. Together, we can ensure a complete, fair, and accurate count in 2020. Visit glendalecounts.com.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Do you have any...
There is one call, but the... Hello? You are on the line. We are listening. It would have been online for a long time. I don't think they would be that patient anyway. Hello? You are online. No? I don't know. Any comments from my colleagues? I hear none.
Nothing for me, thank you.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Nothing for me, thank you."
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I guess, next item, please.
Thank you.
Next item would be consent items, including minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor and councilmembers, 4D was pulled and 4E was added to the agenda.
May I have a motion for the balance of the items?
Excuse me, just a second. I want to pull Item C, please.
Item 4C?
C, 4C.
Okay. Item 4C is pulled. Okay. How about the balance of the items? Do I have a motion for the balance of the items?
I'll move the balance to the consent calendar, Najarian.
Oh, is it? Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay. Item 4C, please.
Community Service in Parks Regarding Supplemental Funding Allocation from County of Los Angeles
Yes.
Thank you.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, item 4C, please.
Community Service in Parks regarding supplemental funding allocation from County of Los Angeles Workforce Development Aging and Community Services in the amount of forty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars for the purchase of a Ford Transit T-250 high-roof cargo van for the Elderly Nutrition Program, ENP, C-2 program for fiscal year 2019 and '20, one motion accepting forty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars in supplemental funding from WDACS in fiscal year 2019, 2020, and authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment 8 with WDACS to accept and implement the funding. Two, resolution appropriating forty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Thank you. City manager, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you'd like a brief report on this prior to any questions that Councilmember Brotman may have.
Yes.
Mr. Bolinikian, are you on, on the line?
Yes, I'm online. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you give a brief report on this item before we have some questions from Councilmember Brotman?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. We have received. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Agajanian, not Mayor Najarian.
No, I said Mayor Agajanian.
He said Mayor.
That's all right. Thank you. You are still former mayor. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Bolinikian.
It's hard, it's hard speaking in the garage, council member.
That's okay.
We received.
This is new reality. This is new reality. Okay.
We received grant funds in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars from County of Los Angeles Workforce Development and Aging and Community Services to purchase a vehicle for our senior meals program. Basically, the funds are coming from the state funneling through LA County. The vehicle needs to be purchased by June 30th, 2020, and the vehicle needs to be in our possession by September 30th of 2020. So, staff is requesting to accept the funds for forty-five thousand and appropriate the funds so we can purchase our Ford Transit T-250 cargo van. We currently have two meal vans in service. This will be our third meal van.
Okay, thank you. Just one question before I go to Councilmember Brotman. So, what happens if you don't buy this truck? If we do not?
If we don't purchase the, yeah, Mayor Agajanian, if we don't purchase the vehicle, we'll lose the funding. And basically, they usually fund every 10 years. The last time they gave us funds for a vehicle was in 2010.
Thank you, but I meant.
And we will be, we will be operating with two vehicles.
But I was going to ask, because I marked this, I was going to ask, operation-wise, how it will impact your work or operation of whatever task is in, is on hand?
We will have our hourly meal drivers work longer shifts and make sure our deliveries are completed on a daily basis.
Okay, it will cost more money to the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, Councilmember Brotman?
Okay, yeah, thank you. Mayor Agajanian, I got that right. So, I obviously, I want us to accept the funds, and I definitely want us to have a vehicle to support this program. The only issue I had is that I would like to request that staff look at electric alternatives. I did a little bit of my own research, and I spoke to the, someone from the LA County Office of Sustainability to get some of their insight. And apparently, there are, there are a number of alternatives. Now, Ford itself is coming out with an electric version of this, but that won't be for another year, so that's not going to work for us. But there is a company, and I sent all this information across Lightning Systems, a Colorado company. They do electric conversions of the Ford cargo vans. And I know, for instance, California Department of State Hospitals has ordered 12 of them. Nissan has a vehicle, the ENV200. It's a little bit smaller. It may not be suitable for us, but, you know, worth taking a look at. There's an Italian company called Iveco, I-V-E-C-O, which makes a similar van. And then there's an LA company called Tomje, which apparently has just supplied a thousand electric vehicles that have very similar specs to FedEx and Ryder. So, I would just like us, before we buy a gas-powered vehicle, to do everything we can to see if these electric alternatives work for us. If they absolutely don't, I'm fine. I know it's just one vehicle, but I think it's important that we, you know, walk the walk, and in any opportunity we have, we go all-electric. So, I'm wondering, and maybe, I don't know if I can make a motion, but if we could split this, accept the funding today, but have staff come back after having looked into this and let us decide on the actual purchase of the vehicle?
So, we accept today, but we're going to have a short period of time to decide. Am I right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if I may, fully understanding Councilmember Brotman's suggestions and agreeing completely about one vehicle at a time and making a difference in this community is something that we are dedicated to doing in terms of greening our fleet. As it relates to this particular purchase and, and the timelines that are set forth by the Los Angeles Workforce Development Aging and Community Services, we have already submitted a specific spec that went to this committee. They approved it at the time, and this was some time ago. And we are now in the process of, of providing them information for electric alternatives. And we're hoping to get the approvals that are going to be commensurate and comparable to a Ford cargo van that is necessary for us to be able to move around the meals that, that Community Services and Parks does. So, if all of those things line up, absolutely, we are prioritizing and wanting to purchase a vehicle that is electric. If those things don't fall into place based on the timelines set forth by the LA Workforce Development Aging and Community Services Group, then we would be unable to purchase the electric vehicle based on the specs that were already approved. What we would ask council is to accept the funds, as, as Councilmember Brotman indicated, and give us the direction to make sure that the priority is to purchase the electric vehicle. In the chance that we are unable to do so, I would hate to give the funds back because we are in the need of purchasing this, this cargo van and allowing us to move forward with a non-electric vehicle if that becomes the option. But I leave it to council in terms of, if you want us to, to come back in the next month to provide you with an update, we, we absolutely can. So, I leave that to you.
So, you'll come back next month?
As soon, as, well, as soon as we get information. Now, if it's in two weeks, that would be fantastic. We'll come back in two weeks. If it's in a month, and we're still within the confines of the grant and our ability to be able to meet the deadlines of the grant. Again, the purchase needs to occur by the end of June, so it doesn't leave us much time. If it works, we will come back to the city council either way to, to give you an update, if that's what the council desires, or to give us the direction to have the priority as the electric purchase. And then we would provide you with that information if that occurs or not. Again, it's up to the city council.
Mr. Councilmember Brotman, is that satisfactory answer to your question?
If I understood it right, that we would, we would vote to accept the funds, and then staff would come back, maybe in two weeks or three weeks, telling us what they've found, and then we'll make a decision. And would that, yes, would that be enough time then to purchase the vehicle? I mean, I don't want, of course, the last thing I want to do is have us lose the funding, okay? I just want us to, I just want to make sure we're looking hard and taking advantage of every opportunity, and I know you share that. So, if, you know, if we can take this up in two weeks, you know, I've sent some of the names of these, these companies. I, I think it should be, you know, relatively straightforward to find out whether they have the specs we need, what the price is, and, and then we can make a decision in two weeks. Is that acceptable?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Brotman, absolutely acceptable as it relates to our process here within the city of Glendale. And if we feel that we are not going to make the, the timelines for the grant, for whatever reason, based on specs, based on the organization's inability to accept the new specs based on their timelines, whatever the issues may be, we can report back to the city council for you all to make a decision accordingly. And we'll do that, if it's in a week, we'll do it in a week. If it's in three weeks and we still have appropriate time, we'll do it in, in three weeks. So, we can come back, certainly.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one thing, if, you know, potentially, we could say that, you know, if you're unable to find an alternative and you're running out of time and there's some reason that you might risk losing this, then we authorize you to go ahead and purchase it. Would that, could we, could we do something like that?
Yes.
I would like.
We're safe. We're not going to have any, we're not, obviously, we're not going to lose it. That's the last thing.
Councilmember Brotman, if you make that, Councilmember Brotman? Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
This is Paula Devine. If you make that motion, I'll be happy to second it.
Okay.
How about if I ask City Attorney Mr. Garcia to formulate it for us?
Actually, I'd like to hear Mr. Brotman formulate it, so that I'm clear.
Mr. Brotman, you have the floor, so you formulate it.
I don't know all the right wording for it. I just know what I want to achieve.
That's what I was trying to make it easier for you. Okay, go ahead. Try.
If, if Mr. Garcia could come up with some words, I think you know what I.
That's what I thought. It would be easier.
To accept the funding, subject to direction to staff to obtain additional information regarding a purchase of electric vehicle within the timeframe required for the acceptance of the grant. And if it cannot be purchased in that time, the staff will be authorized to purchase the vehicle identified in the staff report. That's the motion.
That's the motion. Are you?
I will second.
Okay, I will move, I will move that, those beautiful words.
I second.
So.
Devine, second the motion?
Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you. What's next, please?
Next item is city council and staff comments.
Oh, I thought there was another one that was pulled. I'm sorry, was D pulled?
Yes.
It will come back in.
It'll come back at a, at a later date.
At a later date.
All right, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any city council comment?
Devine, Councilmember Devine has comments?
Please, go ahead, Councilmember Devine.
Okay. First of all, this is my first time doing, or second time doing this WebEx. But I want to thank, in particular, Hog Oak and Jason for spending hours setting this up at my house. So, thank you very much, dedicated staff. Second of all, there was a power outage. It was pouring down rain in the Ross Mine Hills. And I wanted to give a shout-out to our GWP employees. I don't know if the linemen were involved, but they had that outage taken care of in less than an hour. And so, thank you to them for, for being there for all of us. Third, I want to commend the Armenian Cultural Foundation because they, I want to send them a big thank you because they set up with their volunteers. They've opened a supply place or space at the recreational center at the Armenian Church on Central. And they're giving out food and face coverings to their community that, that are in need. And I think that's noteworthy, and I want to give a big thank you to all of them that are involved in that, the Armenian Cultural Foundation. And again, thank you to all of the first responders, all of the store workers, and, and everyone else that's out there still on the line, front lines, helping us to cope with this virus. So, thank you so much. That's it?
Thank you. Any other council member?
I do have some comments. This is Dan.
Mr. Brotman?
Can you hear me? Yeah. I heard a lot back there. Last, what was it? It was yesterday, wasn't it? Was it that we chose a new mayor?
Mr. Brotman?
It was last week.
Mr. Brotman, if you can wait one second, we need to have everybody mute their phones.
Yes. Every person, they have to mute their system, otherwise, this is what we're going to have. So, I'm very familiar with this background noises. So, be careful that your mic is not on. Okay, Mr. Brotman? Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, it was yesterday that we selected a new mayor. I think we said that we would hold off on, on certain comments until today. So, I wanted to, I wanted to thank outgoing Mayor Najarian and just say that, you know, we only overlapped for one full meeting. So, I can't say much about working together, but I've watched you as mayor over the past year, and I know a big part of being mayor is running effective meetings, and I've seen you always do that and always be generous about giving colleagues time to speak, even when what we say, or, I'll use we now, is, is a little bit a stream of consciousness, but you've always been very generous about giving people that time and, and also letting people from the public, you know, express their views, even though sometimes, you know, they're not, they're not always, you know, here to, to be constructive. But from time to time. But anyway, I think you, you've done a wonderful job. And I know that when my time comes, I'm going to really have to work at developing the poise and composure that you've exhibited. I want to thank you for that. And I just want to say, you know, thanks to my friend, Raj Agajanian, now mayor. I said when, when I was sworn in that, that we talked when I was thinking about running. And one of the things that you said to me at that time was, "Whatever you do, once you make up your mind, don't look back." And I just wanted to say that. I remembered that because there were many times when I was getting ready to look back. And, and I, and I remembered that you had said that to me, and I just kept going forward. So, I want to, I want to say thank you to you for that, that comment.
Thank you.
And I have two other, I have two other things, if I could, Mr. Mayor. One of them is, last week, we were talking about closing parks. I raised some concerns about the fire roads that are being closed. And, you know, I, I am totally on board with social distancing. We can't have people clustering in parks on trails. But the problem is, you know, giving people places to go walk because we want them to go out and get fresh air. And some areas, my neighborhood, for instance, they're quiet streets. You can easily walk down the street. It's not a problem. But in a lot of places like South Glendale, you have narrow sidewalks, and it's really hard to, to walk and keep, keep the six-foot distance if somebody, you know, you want to pass somebody or somebody passes you. So, I, I saw that today, the city of Oakland just initiated a plan where they're basically repurposing some spaces on their, some space on the streets because the streets are underutilized now. And they're, they're giving people roadway that they can use for biking, for walking, for jogging, and for things like that. And apparently, LA, there was just an announcement that they're going to be looking into doing that. But I just wanted to make a suggestion that maybe we could also consider that, particularly in South Glendale. It can be very low-tech with some, with some cones. Doesn't have to be, you know, anything permanent, of course. We could try a street maybe that we, we have considered for upgraded bike infrastructure or something. So, I just want to make a request. I don't know if, you know, I need a second for staff to come back with a proposal, or if it's something that they can, they can think about and, and let us know whether they see some easy opportunities to do that. So, in terms of protocol, can I just ask, do I need to do anything, you know, with a motion and a second and all that, or not necessary?
Just...
City Manager will answer your question.
Yes, Mr. Brotman, members of the City Council, with a ask or a suggestion such as this, the protocol is to have a second council member second it, basically, to let us know that there is interest from the dais related to this item, and then staff can have an opportunity to go look at it.
I will second it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then, the last thing, I want to, I want to give kudos to the Economic Development Team. I've had several conversations with people in the small business community from Montrose Shopping Park, The Chamber, and it's clear that Darlene, Jennifer, and Jackie have really been out there every day, working hard as a resource or a small business community. I've seen the materials they put out, it's awesome. And, you know, it's especially commendable, given that, you know, they're writing a new playbook, I understand, as they go. I don't think they were tasked with, you know, preventing the collapse of small businesses during a pandemic. So, please pass on the thanks to them, they've been doing a great job. And, you know, I can see that, you know, small businesses are still very scared and confused. There are a lot of federal programs that get announced, like the PPP, and there's another one, another loan program, the EIDL, I think it's the, what is it, Emergency Injury Disaster Loan Program. They get announced by the federal government, but then, you know, they don't ramp up very fast, and people are confused. So, I know there's not a lot that we can do, but I would just, you know, encourage us to keep doing whatever we can to ensure that small business owners don't just give up. And perhaps, at some point, we can agendize a discussion to look at, you know, maybe have ED come in, Economic Development come in and tell us what they're doing, where there may be opportunities to do more. And certainly, we've been, we've been talking a lot about renters and how to help them, we have a lot more to do there. But I also want to make sure that we, we have our focus on small business. So, just wanted to say that, mainly to express my, how impressed I am with what I see they've been doing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any more comments from City Council members?
I have a...
Mayor? Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes.
Who was Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Former Mayor Najarian. Okay, former Mayor Najarian.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Brotman for his kind words, and I do look forward to working with you as a council member for at least the next year. And my comment is regarding the enforcement of our emergency orders regarding social distancing and face coverings. Madam City Manager, I'm wondering if we could ask the Police Department to, short of issuing a citation, warn people that they can't be out on the streets without face coverings, that they need face coverings. And this is the only way we're gonna really knock down our infection rate. Perhaps, you know, a blip of their siren, and, you know, a calling out to them that you need a mask. And hopefully, our residents will start to get the point. Too many that I've seen, even on quiet neighborhood streets, are going without masks. And it's really not a very good situation, because inevitably, you end up passing someone and breathing on them. And I think it's the least we can do is to encourage our residents to maintain the distancing and the face covering that we put into place a week ago, and social distancing was several weeks ago. Thank you.
Yes, if I may...
Councilmember?
I'm sorry. Mayor Agajanian, I'm so sorry to cut you off, and wanted to respond to Councilmember Najarian's comments related to the face covers.
Please.
It's important distinction to make in terms of the orders that are in place currently. And the orders that are in place for face covering has to do with essential businesses having their employees wear face cover, as well as individuals who are coming in and out of any of these facilities. Our order that is in place, similar to the one that is in the city of Los Angeles, is such that if someone is strolling on the streets, walking, they're in front of their home, or on their street, or walking in the parks, we are not mandating folks to wear a face covering if they're walking on the streets. Many people you see are. Many people feel that those who aren't wearing face covers ought to be wearing them, and you see a lot of that type of conversation occurring either on social media platforms, and/or calls that we receive on our hotline, or the non-emergency number at the Police Department. And so, that clarification needs to be out there, which is, face coverings is good to have on, but it is absolutely not just recommended, but it is required when you are entering any of the essential businesses, such as grocery stores, medical offices, et cetera. So, that's the distinction.
Is there any reason we don't want to expand that emergency order to people walking outside their homes to wear the masks? Especially since we're not issuing citations, or we would request that citations not be issued, but a reminder, by the way, of a notification by the officer, by their fire department, that they need to do that. I thought that was, I thought that was a county-wide order, but if not, why don't we just take that next step? I don't think there's any extra cost, and it will get everyone in the habit of wearing a mask regardless. Thank you.
That's not, you know, it's not something, it's not a bad idea, Councilmember Najarian. It is something that would not be in alignment with our neighboring cities at this time. Doesn't mean that they wouldn't move in this direction anyway, nor does it mean that we have to all be doing the same thing across the county. And so, if there is a thought, a desire from this council, you know, if there would be a second in terms of what Councilmember Najarian brought up, it's something that we would look to, and I could have it as part of an order that I could implement as the Emergency Services Director, and bring it back to you for ratification at our next meeting.
Would you, Councilmember Najarian, would you like the staff to study further, and then they come back, and we continue on that line, to see whether we want to ask?
I'd like, I'd like to know, without violating the Brown Act, if there's any support in expanding our order. I'm not afraid of being at the forefront of other cities. We're certainly, as I mentioned yesterday, we're certainly at the forefront of ethics rules and campaign contributions, and our infection rate is quite high. We are one of the highest rates even in the per capita measurement. So, I think we need to go for this, and let's be serious as a city.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council...
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
What I'd suggest, again, as Ms. Beers noted, as the Director of Emergency Services, she has the authority to implement this rule. Maybe if we could just, if there's a second from a council member, then she can further study it, look at what the other agencies are doing in regards to this, and how it would be enforced. And then, if it's, she deems it appropriate, she can implement the rule, and then we would obviously bring it back, as she mentioned, at the next meeting for ratification. So, I think at this point, the most we can ask for is a second, and then, and then have it for further discussion when we bring it back. But in the interim, Ms. Beers can implement the rule, if she, you know, if at the end of the day, she sees it's appropriate.
Can I...
Member Divine, may I?
Yes, please, Councilmember Divine.
Thank you. I think we all recently got an email from Lisa Chen, and she was saying that regarding the accelerated cases in Glendale, our day-to-day increase in Glendale is 12%. In LA County, it is 6%. Our seven-day increase in Glendale is 112%, and in LA County, it's 85%. I was going to ask, when we were discussing the virus, if it, if our first responders feel it is time now for everyone to wear a mask. So, I would be absolutely in favor of Mr. Councilmember Najarian's suggestion that we, that we require face coverings in our city outside, whenever you're outside.
I just, one thing I want to...
I'll second that.
I want to add something. Yesterday, I was reporting Long Beach has 300, almost 40 people who are affected by coronavirus. Where Glendale last night, of course, when I was reporting, was 255. When you compare with Long Beach, we should have like 150 people to be affected by coronavirus. It shows that in Glendale, it's spreading so rapidly. But one concern I have is to find, because people, they think they have one mask, and they're gonna use it forever, where this mask should be protected every single time. I have this, carrying this with me all the time, I put my mask in it continuously, because to get the mask is not that easy, as far as I know. Usually, like in, I will give an example, in Turkey, they're giving to every single person five masks per week. So, I do not know if we have enough masks, that if we force this, everybody will be able to find masks and replace them on a regular basis. That's my concern. But however, City Attorney, Mr. Garcia, is ready to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Another, another option for the council, since the council just ratified the existing order that was made last week regarding face coverings, the council could ask for that item to be reconsidered, and then take up an item to amend that motion, or amend that resolution to add face coverings across the board by anybody out in the public. And then, so what would be required from that procedurally is somebody from the council to make a motion to reconsider that. It has to be seconded, the council has to vote on that, and then the council can have a discussion about amending that resolution, and have a discussion at that point. So, that's certainly something the council can do right now, if it wishes.
Mr. Garcia, what's the cleanest way to do that? I'm happy to make a motion to reconsider.
That's it, motion to reconsider item 4E.
I will move to reconsider item 4E.
Second.
Okay. That, that just needs a vote, so we can actually have the discussion about amending it, so.
So, so we want to vote on it?
We're voting to reconsider that, so the council can consider amending it.
All right. Take it, can we take the roll call? Yeah.
Councilmember Brotman?
So, just to clarify, we were voting, we're supposed to have the discussion, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, Mr. Brotman.
Okay, yeah.
Councilmember Divine?
Yes.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. So, Councilmember Kasakian, do you want to comment on any issues that we are discussing now?
Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, I did get, I did get booted off the internet connection, which is, I guess, the difficulties of using teleconferencing. But I did want to ask a couple of things. One is, I want to ask staff, I'd like to know, while we're in this situation where we're required to stay home, and traffic is relatively light, much lighter than usual in our city, if staff is considering, and perhaps, either in a memo format, or maybe even bring it back for a brief presentation, let us know if there's plans to follow through, or do any of the road repairs that we may have been scheduling for later on in the year. I think now is an opportune time, while people are not crowding our roads, to fix some of our roads, and do some of the work, rather than waiting when everyone's back on, and it causes more congestion. So, I don't know if any of my colleagues would like to second the report on that.
Yeah. Before we do that, City Manager, yes, Ms. Beers wants to comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Kasakian, very good point related to roadwork, something that, as staff, we have discussed briefly in the last couple of weeks, to see where we are on some of the projects that were in the horizon, the ability to be able to possibly move some forward, that have already have, have the appropriation and the budgets that are appropriate in place. And so, we should have something available in terms of what that may look like fairly quickly, and we'll provide that to the council by way of a memo, to let you know what those timelines are in terms of the roadwork. But very, you know, we're thinking in alignment, as it relates to this, because of the number of cars that are not on the streets today, and our ability to possibly be able to move forward on some of these items is, is key. The timing will be interesting, based on availability of contractors, et cetera, but that's what we're working through, and we'll provide that information to you.
My concern is how the social distancing will impact this roadwork, because the mask is not enough.
Right.
Mask is partially help the person, but that's not 100% covering the person. So, I don't know how you're gonna deal with that item.
The requirements would be in place, related to the social, appropriate social distancing, number of individuals working at a particular site. And that's what the project manager and the inspectors would be tasked with, to make sure that all of those criteria are in place, and we have a safe working environment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there, yes, go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, I have actually a couple more items, but if any of my colleagues, I think I may get cut someone off, please.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kasakian, I think we need to, we need to clean up item 4E. We've just moved to reconsider, to reopen discussions on that, with, to place an amendment to mandate face coverings. I think this is when you were off the air, Mr. Kasakian. Is this the issue for Garcia to deal with now?
Yeah, I think that it's on the floor for discussion at this point. So, it's a good point for council, if they want to make an amendment to the resolution, to include requirement for face coverings to anybody who's out in the public. And I'm not sure if council has any questions for staff on that, but we're here to answer whatever questions you have.
So, I would like to move that we amend item 4E to include an order requiring face coverings for anyone that is out in public, out of the boundaries of their own property block, their home. If the chief, fire chief is available, I think that may provide some very good expert opinion as to whether that is a worthwhile amendment to 4E.
And one item, I'm sorry, should be considered, that if you can find enough masks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sylvia Alonsis, your fire chief. I do think that, that the, the idea behind being a little bit more proactive about encouraging people to wear the face masks and the face coverings is worth the discussion. My, my one hesitation and the concern that I have is, I feel that the face coverings have caused a bit of a false sense of security with the, the community, and where we're seeing more people out and about because of the face coverings. And the message is still very, very clear, that we want you to stay home. The only time you should be out, and should need the face covering, is when you're attending or going to one of those essential businesses. So, I believe that we may be creating somewhat of a false sense of security by encouraging it more in our community. And the other concern that I have is, we've tried to be unified in our message throughout the county. I do not believe that it is a countywide ordinance, or an order for people to wear face coverings when they're out and walking. We have also had several people within the community that have expressed concern about claustrophobia, and the need to enforce, and my partner, Chief Povolitis, can speak to the enforcement a little bit more. It is a very difficult thing to enforce. We simply don't have enough people out and about that could, even with not a lot of people being out in the community, that could provide enforcement to every single person that's walking on the sidewalk. The idea behind the face covering... The idea behind the face coverings, and again, they're not masks, we're trying to make sure that the masks stay available for essential healthcare providers. The face covering, whether it be a bandana, a scarf, or some other type of face covering is what's recommended for people that are attending those essential service-type businesses. So I think it's worth discussing. I don't know that I want to necessarily recommend that we go that direction only because of the mixed messaging. And I'm available to answer questions.
Well, chief, I leave it up to my colleagues. I thank you for your opinion on that. I mean, let's not be surprised if tomorrow or the next day, LA City or LA County, without asking us, go and implements their own ordinances. So I just think it makes sense to do, and I leave that up to my colleagues. If they're, if they think it's a good idea, I'm happy to, but I don't want to create a floor for that.
Yes, Councilmember Devine?
I really, I feel because of the numbers that I'm seeing, that it's time for us to take this extra step. I worry mostly about those people that are out there that are, number one, even disregarding the social distancing, they're not even doing that. And I feel that if we say that they have to wear face masks, then at least we have that covered. And like Councilmember Najarian suggested, you know, if someone, if we see them, if we, the public sees them and tells them they should have a face mask on or a scarf or a face covering, and the police see them, we're not asking the police to stop, he's asking them to just give them a sign, put a face mask on, to stop for a second. I just feel that we are, we are just, these numbers are escalating, and we have to flatten that curve. And so I'm in favor of requiring face covering. And people don't necessarily have to use masks. They are using bandanas and scarves and cotton and material, and there you go, any kind of covering that they have, so it's not a matter of are there masks available. So I'm all in favor of the full measure of the law as far as face masks or face covering.
Thank you. We have Chief Povolitis here to say a few words.
May I make a comment?
One second.
I'll defer to the council member.
Okay, Councilmember Brotman, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sitting here listening to the points. I'm a little uncomfortable with taking this step. I feel that there are people, people really need to be outside, not only to do essential activities, but just to get some fresh air. I mean, we can't, we can't be cooped up at home all the time. I don't know, I guess I would like, you know, if staff could disclose whether from a public health perspective, it really is going to make a difference to wearing a mask if you're walking, you know, with your partner and it's just the two of you and you're walking in an area and you're not near any other people. It seems to me it's, we're potentially going a little bit over the top when we restrict that. It's not very comfortable wearing a mask. I, you know, if I go into a store, of course, but if I'm just, you know, walking on a quiet street, I would, I would love to be able to just breathe the air. So I would like to hear more on that. You know, the fire chief also mentioned claustrophobia. I did have somebody, I think probably she wrote to everybody, that she's a friend who was very concerned about having to wear a mask in a store, and our answer to her was, well, you can get your groceries delivered. But she said, you know, she thought, well, does that make me a prisoner in my house because I can't wear a mask outside? And I said to her, no, you're not a prisoner, you can go out for a walk. Just, you know, be careful about distancing and all that. So I'm a little uncomfortable. And I also, Councilmember Devine mentioned this email with somebody that gave some statistics about the rate of growth, and there is a perception that Glendale has a higher incidence in other cities. And I think, I'm not sure if really it's statistically significant. We are a large city, so we have bigger numbers, raw numbers. When you look at it in terms of, you know, per capita, I guess we're a little bit on the high end compared to maybe LA, but there are many, many cities that are much higher than we are. So I think there may be a false perception that we are doing a bad job. And I, perhaps somebody could do a little bit of statistical analysis and tell us, you know, is that really true? Do we really need to ratchet up? Or are we, you know, are we doing a good job? Or are we at least in line with, you know, the rest of the county? Those are my comments.
Thank you. Police Chief Povolitis is here to enlighten us.
Mayor Agajanian, members of City Council, just a couple of comments on the enforcement part. The police department has sort of moved from what I called education in the beginning of letting people know what the orders mean to encouragement. So we've sort of, as we've been into this for about a month, we're also starting to notice people out and about and not wanting to say that, you know, two days makes a trend because we had a lot of rain last week and people were pretty good about being inside. Over the last couple of days, we've seen a lot more cars out, we've seen a lot more people out, and I will tell you that at least, if you will, in the police department business, we've seen our call load start to move back to more, more towards normal for a day. And so that's people that have broken into cars, that is, a couple of burglaries. We had one incident yesterday where we had somebody on somebody's balcony about to throw a chair through a window and break into an occupied apartment. So there are some, there are some other things that are going on. In the time that our officers are out kind of working around, they've been out educating some of our stores about the newest part of the order and the requirement for face coverings for anybody coming into the store. And so just to set the expectation that if you go down this path, I won't have the resources to respond to everybody's call that, hey, so-and-so is out on their front sidewalk and doesn't have a mask. I would, of course, ask my folks, you know, when they have an opportunity and they're driving by and they see something, you know, to make that comment, as I think Councilmember Najarian mentioned, short of a citation to kind of encourage somebody to do that if you go down here. But there is going to be a certain reality in terms of where our resources are being deployed and based on the orders that are out there, that I will not be able to do, you know, strict 100% compliance and enforcement for every call or email that comes in saying, hey, so-and-so is doing this. I will still say the vast majority of Glendale appears to be in compliance with the orders, but we're noticing a little bit of change over the last couple of days.
Thank you. City Manager, Bill.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, having heard the discussion at the council policy level and understanding some of our limitations based on enforcement, and really having spent the last three-plus weeks along with our staff and the task force that's in place, looking at all of the Department of Public Health orders that come in on a weekly basis, sometimes multiple times a week, and watching other cities and not in any way refuting what former Mayor Najarian said related to, don't be surprised if there is a change from Department of Public Health and they're asking everybody to have face coverings on, and we've seen that happen time and time again. But based on, I think, what we've seen from Department of Public Health thus far, that they are not requiring everybody to put on a face covering when they leave their home, they are requiring it while entering an essential business to have a face covering on. My recommendation, as your city manager, would be to maintain the orders that are in place today, which is have the face coverings for central businesses, for employees, as well as those who are entering these businesses. But the allowance for those who are out and about to either wear them or not would be up to the individuals at hand. The council can, as part of an order, highly recommend it, but not require it. So you can make that next step to say you highly require, would recommend that individuals put on a face cover, but not require it. That would be our suggestion, based on what I've heard from both chiefs, having spent quite a bit of time in the last few weeks on different calls and knowing what other cities are doing, that would be our recommendation.
Okay. Is there any more comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
We have a, yes. And I do want to point out that the latest statistical evidence is that if we maintain our current level of social distancing and including facial, face masks and face coverings, that it's expected by August, we're going to have 30% of the population infected. However, if we increase our efforts, such as requiring face coverings outside the home, that level is going to be down to 3% of our population. So there's been a motion, there's been a second, I'm going to call for a roll vote and let, you know, I think I'm really disappointed that we're going this way. This is a very basic, basic thing we could do, and we're sitting here saying, no, it's, you know, I need that fresh air. We're talking about lives, we're talking about an infection rate. Let's see how the vote goes.
Right, I agree.
Okay. So if that's your desire, maybe a roll call, please. Is there anything, Mr. Garcia?
Unless any of the other council members have comments before you take the vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kasakian. Yes, please.
I appreciate Councilmember Najarian's passion on this issue, and, you know, as a son of two medical professionals, I understand his concern. I think that there are good points being made on both sides. I would think that if someone is standing somewhere outdoors where there's no one around them, absolutely no one, I don't know necessarily what the requirement of a mask would be. Obviously, there has been some legitimate concerns brought up by individuals who have some sort of concern about, you know, whether it's claustrophobia. I mean, I don't know if the issue was raised regarding individuals who are disabled and need to read lips in order, if they're hearing impaired, which is an issue. And I really don't know, I mean, this is uncharted waters for all of us, but I do think that perhaps maybe we can find a middle ground and that being to bolster or strengthen whatever orders we are instructing our staff to implement, to say that if you happen to be someplace where you're going to be within less than six feet of someone, or maybe 10 feet, that you have a mask and that you wear a mask. So if you are outdoors and you are walking around your neighborhood, but you see people walking towards you, you have your mask available to you. But otherwise, you know, you're not going to have to have it covering your face the whole time. That may be one suggestion that Councilmember Najarian maybe you'd consider.
Councilmember Najarian, would you consider that?
Well, the thing is, people don't parachute down into open spaces, let's say, in the park. You get to the park by walking out of the house, walking on the sidewalk, crossing streets, and very dependent people, and that's the whole thing.
Councilmember Najarian, but let me ask you this, you're on the MTA board, is everyone who's riding an MTA bus being required to wear a mask right now?
I don't think MTA has that authority to, it's a city-by-city jurisdiction. We don't have authority for that.
On the buses?
They are encouraged to, actually, I'm sorry, I believe we are, I believe we've just implemented a mask rule on our buses and public transport.
Okay, so that would make sense because you're in an enclosed space and you're spreading potentially germs, right? So, but, you know, and talking about parachuting, there's, I mean, I think that we can find some happy medium here, but, you know.
This is Councilmember Devine, and, you know, everybody knows that we're in a time now where we have to make sacrifices. It's not going to be easy, it's going to be difficult. But in order to save lives, I think we have to, with the numbers that we're seeing in our city, when we go out and we see people bumping into each other, they have no masks, they're not keeping the distance, at least if they are required to have a mask on, there is some protection. We are talking about saving lives. And I'm not understanding why, you know, they're saying, well, you know, if you're going to take a walk, you don't need it. You walk next to somebody, and I just saw it on TV, if they cough or they sneeze, it travels 25 feet. So if you don't have a mask on and you're out there walking, you're not only going to get fresh air, but you're going to get the virus. So I really, I'm really concerned about our community and our residents. I have not, you know, I don't feel trapped. I have not been outside in three weeks, and I, you know, it's something that we just have to do if we want to stay healthy, stay safe, and stay alive. So that's my position now. And I don't see any, at this point, I don't see any happy medium.
I mean, just so you know, a mask can still carry germs. And let's also acknowledge that none of us here on this dais are medical professionals, but I'm happy to indulge an ear on the side of caution. If this is what, you know, the majority wants, you know, we'll wear masks. But I'm also concerned about what the punishment will be for violating this, as well as the enforcement, and lastly, the availability to those residents who may not have access or can afford face coverings. And I know people have said, well, you can use fabric, you can use some napkin, you can use whatever it may be, but, you know, I have asked staff about purchasing masks so we can pass them out to our most vulnerable members of our community who may need them in an emergency. I don't know if we have them in place yet when we're making a requirement of people to wear something, but we don't know if they'll have ready access.
May I make a comment?
Yes, please. Mr. Councilmember Brotman?
I just wanted to say that I, I just had a resident donate 300 masks to our city program. So if people need a mask, you know, we're collecting items, and again, they can use purchase. There are so many different ways of making masks that have been on the internet, on TV, that it seems that, you know, just about anything you pick up in your house can be used as a mask or a face covering. So I don't see an argument, a plausible argument there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brotman? Councilmember Brotman?
I'm equally concerned with saving lives and with health. I feel it's a big step, and I think as Councilmember Kasakian just said, we're not experts here. I really think that we should, my recommendation would be, start with a strong recommendation that people wear masks outside. Let the, let staff look at the public health questions around this, and we can come back and make this decision at a later time. I think there are implications that we're sitting here right now, we're not able to think through. I also think, you know, we draw the line somewhere, no matter what we do. You know, we could say, people can't go out at all, right? People can't go out to exercise, people can't go out to walk, we could say that too. I mean, that would actually potentially save some lives. I just, I just don't think, we're always drawing lines, and I think that in this case, I think we're taking a little bit, too big of a step, too suddenly, without enough public health knowledge, and I think there's also a little bit of unfairness because, in my case, sure, I could hang out in my backyard, not everybody has that. I just, anyway, that's, my view is, we should be a little bit more cautious with this.
First, I want to ask each of my colleagues to wait and ask the council to wait to be recognized, so otherwise it will be hard to listen to what you guys are saying. The second thing, the way I understood, maybe from our Chief of Police and Chief of Fire, what was your recommendation in brief? If you guys can make your recommendation briefly, what you are suggesting to do because you have probably more experience. What they were talking about a little bit earlier, I want to make a clarification. Long Beach, per 100,000, they have 80 people who are having, fighting with coronavirus. We have, since last night, because I reported, as I said a little bit earlier, we have 125 or 127 and a half, actually, per 100,000 population that, who are suffering from coronavirus. So our situation is bad in relation to lots of cities. I reviewed that. But I don't know with But I don't know with this mask story, so I want to hear again from Chief Lanzes and then from Chief Pavolides. Maybe we can then decide what to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Najarian.
Yeah, I'm going to interrupt. Why don't we all go to the CDC front page? The headline is, Use of Clock Face Covering Helps Slow Spread of COVID-19. I mean, are we going to keep going over this? Haven't, I mean, where have we been these past few days? We've holed up, well, that's where we've been, we've been holed up in our homes. I mean, uh, the recommendations are clear. This was resolved four weeks ago. So I don't know what, you know, what we're doing here. I mean, I'm really disappointed if we can't take this modest step of preventing the spread of a virus.
I appreciate, I appreciate your concern, but let's listen one more time to, the chiefs are ready.
Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to be recognized whenever you have it. I apologize.
I'm sorry, say again. It got cut off. Yeah, but they.
I, I wanted to be recognized, but I did not want to interrupt you. Unfortunately, I can't, um, I can't raise my hand like I would in one of the classes.
Councilmember Kasakhian, go ahead.
You know, first of all, this isn't about, you know, who cares about the community more? This is about making sure that when we make a decision, we make it the right way, the most equitable way, that we hear all sides. And I am sorry if this is taking a little bit longer, council members, than you anticipated, but I think it's a discussion worth having. And look, I'm going to vote with you. And if we don't see the numbers necessarily going down in the next week or two weeks, I hope that you'll also reconsider and also, and I've asked staff to invite besides our fire chief and our police chief, some of our healthcare professionals, of which we have many here in this city, uh, dealing with this issue, to also give us direction. That's one thing we haven't done, other than when, you know, when we recognize, um, the hospitals for their work. So, look, I'll go along because I'd rather err on the side of caution, but, you know, let's not confuse causation with correlation. And none of us really understand why necessarily the numbers are going up. It's certainly not because of some of the reasons that have been suggested. So, sure, I know that Councilmember Najarian wants to call the question, I can second that if you want, or if the mayor would like, we can move ahead with the vote.
It's already been seconded.
Let's listen to hear the Chief Pavolides and Carl Pavol, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Sylvia Alons, your Fire Chief. Ultimately, we, we are going to support the decision of this council, the recommendation that if you're asking me for my recommendation, I think we should strongly encourage people to continue to stay home where they're safer. If they go out of their home and they're going to be attending an essential service, they should be wearing a face covering. I think we should strongly encourage that action amongst our community. And, uh, other than that, I'll support whatever decisions made from this council. There's nobody that wants to save lives and wants to protect our community more than me.
Chief Pavolides, last word.
Paul Pavolides, Police Chief. Again, I'm not going to claim to be the medical expert. I would just tell you from the standpoint of enforcement, uh, because sometimes when we set these expectations, then the phone calls do come in. Just understand that we're not going to be able to respond to every call of somebody who says they're not wearing, wearing a face mask. Uh, you know, our officers have been encouraged to do that and strongly encouraged, uh, to wear face masks, although we've got to even remind our officers that that mask protects other people more than it protects you unless that's, unless that's an N95 mask. And those aren't, aren't as, as readily available. So, you know, as I said, we've moved from education to encouragement to try and break up some of the groups and the, and the, uh, encourage more of the social distancing within, within the community. But as I said, following along where Councilmember Najarian was, if you do decide to go down this path, we'll obviously do our part to try and encourage people to, uh, to, to comply with that.
Thank you very much. So what we want to do now, roll call? Okay, roll call. Be heard from everybody, so, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to restate it. The motion was to amend the resolution of 4E to require face coverings for anybody that is in public outside of their, the boundaries of their property.
Is there any penalty or punishment for if I don't wear?
Well, it is, it is an order, it would be an order. It is subject to the administrative citations and, um, you know, there are penalties with it, but again, as Chief Pavolides just said, it's more trying to get people to comply through, through warnings and, and the like.
Education.
And education.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Um, if this were a recommendation, I'd be yes, but as an order, I'm a no.
So on what it has been suggested before, then you're saying no?
On the basis of it being an, an order, I, I'm a no.
No, okay.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Kasakhian?
Can I have just one more point of clarification? Does this require wearing masks in cars as well?
In?
In an automobile.
Oh, inside automobile.
I don't think it would be enforced that way.
No.
We don't think or we know?
Well, what I'm saying is it's, it's silent, and so we would interpret it not to be enforced that way because the way I heard, uh, the motion made, it was for folks that are out in public and would be exposed to other people in the public.
Right. Is that accurate? Councilmember Najarian?
I will, I will extend the, uh, the intent of the order to cover people in their vehicles.
So inside the vehicle, they should have masks?
No.
No.
No, okay.
Unless it's a bus.
Not to extend it.
Unless it's a bus?
We're taking roll call, so I'm ready to vote.
I just want to be clear as to what I'm voting on, otherwise I'll abstain. Buses, yes. Cars, no.
Beeline buses? Federal buses?
Yes, and, and I vote yes.
So you vote yes. You vote, Councilmember Kasakhian is yes, correct. Okay.
Keep going.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
I guess yes has it, so it doesn't matter, yes. Okay. Thank you. Uh, now I would like to take any calls from the public. I guess they were waiting for such a long time.
This is, uh, Community Event.
Would you like me to read Community Event announcements?
Did we finish with, Councilwoman's public comments? If I may, did we finish council comments? That was, it was, this discussion started in the middle of Councilmember Najarian's comments, so I just, okay.
You already voted?
No, I know, but.
I think we cut off Mr. Kasakhian, actually, in the middle of his comments, uh, to bring it back to this item, if I remember correctly.
So, so Mr. Mayor, uh, under item five on the agenda, City Council Staff Comments, I think Mr. Kasakhian still had some comments to, uh, to make.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try to be as, as brief as possible. Thank you for the information, City Manager, there's on, um, potential roadwork during this period. Um, I'd also, I just want us all to know as the council members, as soon as possible, how much of our budget is vulnerable and how much we have potentially lost in March and will lose in April and each month thereafter. I think to do that, I'd like to ask staff to prepare, uh, for the next council meeting, I know that's in a few weeks, and for the subsequent budget study sessions and beyond, the schedule of, um, year-to-date revenue and its sources such as sales tax or property tax. While I believe like March numbers will only be marginally affected because of our lockdown was only two weeks, I'm concerned about the April numbers will be much worse. And frankly, to do our jobs for the city of Glendale, we need to know how, now, as soon as possible. Um, I would like a report, um, for March and each month thereafter. So if we can find out, you know, how much revenue we were receiving in years past, what we project our losses to be, um, it's going to give us a more realistic picture to be able to, uh, plan, um, for the future. And I know budget study session is coming up, but I think it's important for us as one of the largest cities in Los Angeles County to have this report, to make it public, for people to know and for us to really understand the impact of this crisis.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no second is necessary on, on the item requested by Councilmember Kasakhian. This item will be before you, um, in two weeks at the April 28th, uh, first budget study session. We'll have information related to this and we will provide you with updates as he requested to that information, at least on, on a monthly basis, if not, um, sooner than that.
Thank you. Was that satisfactory, Councilmember Kasakhian? After April 20?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now I would like, yeah, go ahead.
One, one other item I'd like to have a second on. Um, again, congratulations, Mayor Agajanian, um, on your appointment selection, and I wish you a very productive year, um, in spite of all these circumstances and these difficulties. Um, but I'd also like to see staff bring back a report on how to establish a more formalized process, uh, for selection of mayor and chair of our other bodies. Um, so there's some logic and reliable pattern for how the appointment and rotations occur. Um, this may have been looked at in the past. I don't know if there was a presentation made, but I'd like staff to cast a wider net, look at what other cities do and not just here in California, and bring back the best practices, uh, for our city to consider.
All right.
You need a second for that.
Do we have a second? We have the second, so.
Yeah, I would second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Brotman is second.
We'll bring that back.
All right, so they will bring the report back. Thank you. Now I would like to.
That is all for today, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to the Community Event announcement, I guess, at this time. You're on the air with council members.
Hello?
Hello.
Yes, hi, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was my turn. Um, yes, hi, Mayor and everybody else. Uh, I would like to ask the City Council, um, City Council to pass an emergency ordinance for the deployment of the 5G during the quarantine. Uh, this is very urgent, what's happening right now and, uh, you know, we're asking all the cities to pass, uh, emergency ordinance because City of Simi Valley, they already passed it. So I hope, uh, you guys would follow a good example of Simi Valley and, uh, people, you know, more important than profit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
You are on the air with City Council members and staff.
You are on the air with City Council members.
Would you, would you lower the volume of your TV or the way you have been connected? Or go away from the unit? Otherwise, we echo all alone.
Um, this is Mike Moheal. Mayor, am I on?
Yes, you're on.
Okay. Uh, again, uh, I wish you the best in your endeavor as the new mayor, and I also like to wish and congratulate the, uh, new council members. I would like to make a public announcement that we have a whistleblower within the GWP who has spoken out. It has come to my attention that, uh, this morning, that Young Tracy Foo has sued the city of Glendale in the Los Angeles County Court alleging GWP fired her after she voiced concerns about submitting a fraudulent plan to state reg, to state regulators and Glendale City Council that severely undershot, under shot, the amount of greenhouse gases produced under a proposed energy production framework. Such a plan would deprive California of reaching its goal to double its energy efficiency by 2030. Ms. Foo said, a supervisor, mind you, told her in June that if she did not, not move forward with the unlawful report, she did not need to come back to, to that, come back to the office the next day. Four days later, Mayor, Tracy Foo was fired. Tracy Foo alleges, while reviewing a consultant initial report for the council and the commissions, she found numerous shortcomings that would prevent Glendale from meeting California's emissions targeted, including a reliance on electric vehicles, credits that were not minded, not backed by credible research, as to how much emission savings they would provide. Councilmembers, who was that supervisor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. You are on the air with council members and staff.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor Agajanian. This is Adam Agajanian, City Councilmember's staff. Um, I'm calling you to ask that you impose a moratorium on small cells and other wireless infrastructures, permit process and deployment until the COVID-19 emergency is over. The wireless providers you're using, the COVID-19 emergency is a cover to expand and cement their rapid and virtually unsupervised deployment of harmful wireless infrastructures. Our local leaders should not have to dedicate time and resources to policing whether the wireless companies are following local and state law. They have far more important things to do. Um, I just want to bring to your attention that the FCC wireless permit rules allow for emergency moratoria. Homeland Security Guidelines emphasize that maintenance of existing communication capabilities is the priority. Contrary to what former Mayor Najarian implied today during his Facebook Live, new construction of small cell infrastructures is not essential under Homeland, uh, the Homeland Security Guidelines. The COVID-19 emergency has led to a government shutdown of non-essential activity. Hospitals, emergency response and local officials are overwhelmed and they must be allowed to focus on what is indeed essential. Now is not the time to be dedicating resources to expanding rather than just maintaining our networks. Homeland Security again has declared that local government, uh, local government is the forefront and can take control over determining whether a temporary halt of non-essential activities is made. Homeland Security, uh, guidance documents prioritize maintenance of communication systems and do not support, uh, essential and do, and do not support essential status for construction. So I basically, um, I'm calling to the, the city of Glendale, uh, to impose a moratorium on the deployment and freeze the permit process until COVID-19 emergency is over. And I ask you to do this tonight because as, uh, uh, Councilmember Kasakhian just implied, you are going to not have a meeting for a few weeks. This is very important that this is stopped immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You are on the air with City Council and City Staff. Please.
Hello?
You know, uh, state your name first, please.
My name is Jordan Davis.
Thank you. We are listening.
Hi, thank you for your time tonight. I'd like to make two, uh, three actually, suggestions for the council related to this COVID crisis and how it's affecting tenants in Glendale. I called back in March and at that point I asked for, um, immediate rent freezes for tenants. And now at this point, um, I would like to ask the council, um, Glendale, the city and the county, they all need to go further to support tenants. Um, and to me, that means further avoiding a public crisis, mass evictions and homelessness that would result as COVID continues and, and after this immediate crisis is over. Um, so first, I would like to ask for a tenants' council to advise the Glendale City Council on these tenant and housing-related matters. How COVID is affecting tenants needs to be a standing discussion at each city council meeting. There are updates from the police and the fire department, um, from public health, and there also needs to be input from tenants, um, especially during this crisis because there are very few or no tenants in the city council chambers at these meetings. So I would like to ask to pass a movement for there to be a standing update from a tenants' council, um, and to listen to their recommendations for future. tenants' council and to listen to their recommendations for future meetings. Second, it's really difficult for tenants in Glendale to understand what's happening at the city level related to this COVID crisis, especially around rent and evictions. I'm paying attention to what's happening, and even I'm really confused what's being passed and, and what's not. So there needs to be much clearer announcements for tenants, also for landlords, because a lot of landlords don't know what's going on, on the Glendale City website, and announce publicly through all the means that are available through the council, such as through text and email. I know you have signage available publicly as well on what tenants need to do in order to not be evicted, and what has been passed for tenants and also for landlords as well. Tenants are really scared and confused, and they need much clearer communication from their city council on how they're being supported in Glendale. And third, I really would like to urge the council to adopt the Healthy LA Coalition platform, which is this week been under consideration by the L.A. County Board of Supervisors. And it also really needs to be adopted on all the cities, cities in the, in the counties. So I can email it to all city council members. It's healthyla.org, and their platform is on there. On there, they urge for immediate rent relief and mortgage suspension, prohibit late fees, and offer at least a 24-month rent repayment period for tenants. And that last part is really important, the 24-month rent repayment period. They also urge for back payment of rent to be treated as traditional consumer debt, which would stop evictions from happening at the end of this emergency period, which would be a massive public health crisis. So I urge you to provide stronger and clearer support for tenants during this time in Glendale. So just to sum all of that up, please adopt a tenants' council to advise you on these matters. Please make what is being done to help tenants clear on your website and through public announcements that are available to the council members. And please look into and support the Healthy LA platform that you can find at healthyla.org.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for your time, and I'll be emailing you and calling in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask a question, please?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Yes, I'd just like to know if the letter has gone out with the explanation of the eviction resolution that we adopted to renters and landlords?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the letter did go out. I was looking at staff just to make sure it had gone out, and yes, it has gone out.
It went out.
Thank you. She must not have gotten it.
You are on the air with City Council and City Staff. Hello? Okay. This was, this is the last call, so...
Council's a letter.
All right. So what's next, please?
Next would be action items. 8A, City Attorney Regarding Hospitality Workplace Worker Protection Proposal. Unite Here Local 11 Proposed Emergency Ordinance and Policies. 8A1, Motion to Note and File Information. 8A2, Motion Providing Direction to Staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know, the city and the City Council received a request for the council to consider the hospitality workplace worker protection proposals, protections. And so we've prepared a report for you, and Ms. Van Miden is going to provide a summary for you of the, of the request that was made here by Unite Here Local 11.
Ms. Van Miden.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. As was mentioned by the city attorney, middle of last month, we did receive a request by Unite Here Local 11 in the forum of an emergency ordinance with certain provisions to protect hospitality workers in light of the COVID-19 epidemic that we're experiencing, and we've discussed a great deal here tonight. I am attempting to move this forward. So in summary, there are several important provisions that were included, and they're on your screen, and those were this fair discharge and recall, the rehire preference, hospitality worker retention, change in control, public hygiene training and hand washing, collective bargaining agreement supersession, as well as retaliation and enforcement. Although we don't have these provisions currently within our Glendale municipal code, these are provisions that are in other city municipal codes. So they are, in fact, within the Santa Monica, principally within the Santa Monica Municipal Code adopted in 2019, also from the City of Philadelphia Municipal Code, that would be the fair discharge and recall provisions, and then other provisions from the City of Los Angeles, that is the hospitality worker retention from their 2000 code. And these are the provisions that are mirrored from these other cities. So let's just talk about the provisions in a little bit of detail. So the first is this fair discharge and recall provision. As I mentioned, it, it mirrors what the City of Philadelphia adopted in 2019, but the genesis of that was to protect their parking employees who work at their public parking lots from wrongful discharge. And in essence, what this does is protect, in this case, the hospitality workers from discharge except for bona fide economic reasons, and it must be for just cause. Within the Philadelphia ordinance, there is a definition of just cause, which is not included here. It may have been an oversight, but the provisions that would constitute the factors giving rise to a situation that was not just cause are included in the proposed ordinance. Hopefully, I didn't jump ahead too far. Okay. The next provision, and this is in the first chapter, is this preference for the recall or the rehire of qualified discharged employees. So if employees were discharged and they, it was not for just cause, that there is a procedure set forth in the ordinance that would, and this would apply retroactively, to require the rehire of that employee when there's a similarity between the new and old position, if that position is available, and the seniority, and there are certain timing requirements that are also included for a qualified worker to accept or eject a, an offer to be rehired. Continuing into the next section of the ordinance, it's the hospitality worker retention, which is modeled after the Los Angeles Municipal Code provisions from 2006. This particular provision is designed to protect workers where there is an instance of change in control. What they mean by change in control is that there's a sale of the asset or, or any sort of transaction or consideration that is, is a shift in the ownership or control of that asset to a new, to a new owner. And so to protect those workers under those circumstances from being discharged, there are several provisions that I've taken the key points of, that there would be notice provisions for those employees, that they would be aware of the timing of the occurrence of this change in control, that workers that are eligible to stay on or to be rehired would be made available, and that list must be maintained for a particular period of time. So again, this just cause, discharge of workers comes into play, and that, so the rehire or the retention of employees would apply only to those workers that are qualified and that have not otherwise been discharged for this just cause. Where there are fewer workers required by the new hospitality employer, and in that instance, the retention would be based on whether or not there was a collective bargaining agreement between the employment group and the hospitality employer on seniority and experience. To continue, there are a few more provisions that are relevant and important. That new employment would be under the same terms, would be under the terms and conditions of the new employer. Again, discharge only for just cause reasons. There, offers would need to be made on, with, with job specs that are set forth clearly. There's performance evaluations that are required, and if there was a successful performance evaluation after 90 days, then there would be, have to be an offer of continuing employment to that employer that was qualified. Moving on to the next section, and that is the public hygiene training requirement. This is not new. The City of Santa Monica's ordinance contains this from 2019, and it does have a number of implications for administrative oversight by the city. What, essentially what it would require is annual hygienic training by a qualified third party, so not given by the internal hotel group itself. And that, the city would be responsible for establishing the, the protocols for the training and would be issuing the certifications that would come from that training. The specifications for the training are, are pretty extensive. In fact, I didn't include all of them within this PowerPoint. They are in your attachments. Besides the city being required to establish the training and certification programs, the training, the trainer would have to have particular types of experience in providing these types of training to hospitality workers, to workers that are maybe of immigrant status and low wage, and that they are required to use very specific training techniques that involve both live and interactive, as well as having knowledge of the languages that are used by those workers that, that would receive, be receiving the training, and it's to be a minimum of six hours. In addition, and this is where the COVID-19 aspect of this public hygiene training comes into, into play, is that there are best practices and techniques that must be developed and applied in this training for the COVID-19 sanitation processes and, as well as for more traditional aspects of, of hygiene, and that would have to do with, with infestations, as well as interesting instances where there may be domestic violence, violent or threatening conduct for those employees to be able to recognize that kind of conduct, or human trafficking, criminal activity, the workers would also need to be notified of their rights and responsibilities. A worker would not be able to be retained for more than 120 days unless they have one of the training certificates, and this applies as well to hosts of short-term rental, where they may be hiring these cleaning contractors. Those employees would also need to receive this training under this ordinance, and these requirements would become effective within 90 days of the effective date of the ordinance. So it's a very rapid turnaround to put a, get, put together a pretty extensive program for the city to, to hire, to, to determine who would be a qualified trainer under all of these requirements. So that's, that's a fairly quick turnaround. A new measure that is not included anywhere, and this is again as a COVID-19 response, is under Section 104, Measures to Facilitate Hand Washing. That comes up in the context of there are certain breaks that are, employees are required to receive, that, that additional time for sanitation, for personal sanitation prior to resuming work, as well as the additional time taken to perform additional activities to ensure that those rooms are adequately clean, that those workers would not be docked at time, they would be compensated for that time to perform those sanitation activities, but also that they would not be subject to the room quotas, for violation of the room quotas or room credits that typically come with those hiring requirements. So that's a new provision that no other city has at this moment in time. Moving on to the more traditional provisions that are included here, the City of Santa Monica has a, this provision, it's the supersession by bona fide collective bargaining agreements. Essentially, what this means is that the fair discharge and recall and the preferential hiring, those are retention provisions in sections, chapters one and chapters two of this proposed ordinance, would be superseded and could be waived if there was a mutual agreement between the parties to not apply those, and that would be where that collective bargaining agreement already handles those types of activities. So that is, again, in, in the Santa Monica Municipal Code and was vetted by them. Moving on, Chapter 7 is a retaliatory action prohibition for a worker who is exercising any of the rights that are protected under the ordinance, and it sets forth a rebuttable presumption that such employment action is adverse to that employee if it is taken within 90 days of that employee exercising said rights. There are civil remedy provision included. This is different from the City of Santa Monica. City of Santa Monica does have both a criminal enforcement provision, which would be up to a $500 fine and six months in jail, as well as civil enforcement of remedies. And here, it would be, is the same as Santa Monica's, and that is for injunctive relief or damages. There would be a private right of enforcement, so a hotel worker could seek to enforce that remedy, our, our ordinance provisions, by filing a civil suit. That is the sum and substance of what has been put in front of you by Unite Here Local 11 on an emergency basis. We're bringing this forward to you now as an informational item, and if you so choose to give us direction to do further research and outreach, and that is what you see as potential next steps, there are four potential next steps, and that would include contacting other cities, as mentioned, to do a little bit further research, Santa Monica, City of Los Angeles, among others. And just to update you as well, we did a little outreach to find out how Burbank, Pasadena, Santa Monica, some other cities are reacting to this ordinance, having been presented to them as well. Pasadena will be considering it on the 20th of April as an information item. It was also presented to the City of Burbank, but they are not taking that item up. The recall rights and retention, which are from the City of Philadelphia's ordinance that was protective of their parking workers, was, direction was given concerning that on March 27th, and we're still running to ground what exactly that, that entails. And Santa Monica has not taken any action on these new proposals. So would, we would, as part of potential next steps, if we received that direction, we would be looking to reach out to the other municipalities to determine what, if anything, they are doing with respect to the new ordinance, to take a look at the existing regulations. For example, Santa Monica spent about 18 months conducting a little bit of research and outreach. We have not had any interactions yet with one of our principal stakeholders, and those are the owners and operators of the hotels, the hospitality facilities within Glendale. So that's a clear outreach that we would need to do. Continuing, we would also need to internally look at our, the legal and the fiscal and the policy impacts of the implementing these proposed regulations, as well as determining what, whether other cities have considered or need to adopt separate measures to facilitate the new public hygiene protocols. It's my understanding that there was a contact from the representative Danielle Wilson from Unite Here 11, and some of those protocols, and I could be corrected, it was not a firsthand conversation, that may not necessarily need to be implemented. So that is the summary of what was presented to you in mid-March, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any question or comment from council members?
Mayor, do you have any calls?
I have one call, yeah. Okay, I will take this call, please, the caller, it, it should be about item 8A. Just, you are on the air with City Council members and City Staff. Hello? Hello? You are on the air.
Hi, my name is Danielle Wilson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Danielle Wilson, and I'm a research analyst with Unite Here Local 11, the hotel workers' union here in Glendale. As you know, thousands of hard-working hospitality workers, many of whom live in Glendale, have lost their jobs. And right now, unlike in Santa Monica, workers in Glendale have no certainty regarding their job security. We've already seen what the lack of such protections means for workers at hotels, like the famous Chateau Marmont Hotel in Hollywood. According to worker reports, the Chateau Marmont told workers that they would be terminated. They lost their health insurance, and there is no commitment to bring them back to work. One of those workers, Walter Almenadis, worked at the One of those workers, Walter Almenada, worked at the hotel for 23 years, of similar duration to many in the hospitality industry. He was quoted in the LA Times saying, "I'm fighting. I'm fighting to help pass a law to give workers protections in the hopes that when this crisis is over, I'll be able to get back my job. I'm very, very worried. Honestly, we're really worried. A baby not having healthcare?" Walter is a new father to a seven-month-old. Your role in this crisis is to answer the worries of hard-working people like Walter. After 9/11, the City of Santa Monica passed a worker job security law to ensure that hotel workers displaced by the economic impacts of 9/11 could return to work in order of seniority when business returned. Please support a similar worker recall and retention policy to workers here in Glendale. It is a no-brainer and the least a municipality can do to give hotel workers, who are the backbone of the tourism economy here in Glendale, a fighting chance when this crisis is over. Please direct staff to draft a policy that includes at least recall rights and worker retention. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other calls, so if my colleagues, they want to comment on this item, they're welcome to do it at this moment. And please wait to be...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Councilmember Brodmann, please.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of us working out an ordinance. I think, a couple things. One, I think we do need to go through some process involving, you know, conversations with people on all sides of this issue. And although I do think that it is not very controversial, what's being proposed, I still think it's appropriate to get input. I think, given that the issues here have been addressed in other cities, I don't think it should take us, you know, 10 months, and I don't think we'd have 10 months. So I would hope we could expedite this, do this quickly, and have an ordinance in, say, two months. I don't think we can afford to wait very long, because I think as, you know, hotels get financial support from, you know, the government, they may start bringing back workers sooner rather than later. So we do need to address this relatively quickly. So that would be my suggestion, would be to go ahead, work up an ordinance, do some outreach, get some input from the industry, but really try to accelerate this. And I think we know here that, you know, most hotels are, you know, they're good people and they're going to do the right thing, and I don't think that they would find this very difficult. And our concern are really the bad actors, who are going to take advantage of the most vulnerable workers, and that's really who we're trying to address in this type of an ordinance. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any more comments? Or city council member Devine?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I feel that there are many provisions in this proposal that are warranted. I think it's a great, we don't have an ordinance, I think it's a great opportunity for us to craft our own. And I think that the protection of jobs is very important at this time. I have questions about the necessity of 1.04, the hand-washing proposal. And also, I want to comment on the, what's it called? It's the hotel housekeeper safety policy. I feel that we should have an ordinance separate from this one, or maybe not separate, but for protection of the hotel housekeepers. I understand that, you know, a lot of them are working at night, and there is no way if someone attacks them for them to get help. So I think we should have an ordinance in our city that requires hotels, especially those that are going to be built in the future, to have some, either panic buttons installed or have some sort of a program for the personal security devices. I think this is really important. When I was campaigning and speaking with union representatives, this was a major concern, the safety of their workers. And I agree that a lot of times, they are probably in very vulnerable positions, and so I would want to make sure that this is part of the ordinance, and perhaps even a separate ordinance, that we require even the hotels that are already in existence to maybe have available, not panic buttons, but personal security devices for their employees. So I would approve this for outreach, to let's sit down with the stakeholders, the hoteliers and the workers and anyone else that's involved, the union, Unite Here, and come up with an ordinance that we are satisfied with and that the hotel workers are satisfied with as well. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment from council members? Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Najari?
So I'm very much in favor of the fair recall provisions and the fair discharge provisions. So I have a couple questions. Out of all those hotels that we have in our exhibit, how many of them are represented by a collective bargaining agreement? I maybe don't have that answer right off the bat. I presume a lot of the smaller hotels and motels do not have that. Because that leads me to my next point is, I mean, I think that the fair recall and discharge provisions are very critical. I don't think that if there's a collective bargaining agreement, that that should be able to be traded away, let's say, for higher wages or for greater pensions. And I'm not sure that's where this ordinance is going, but it does say that if there is a collective bargaining agreement, that those provisions can be waived. So I don't think they should be waived. I think they should remain in any event, even if there is a collective bargaining agreement, because we're just talking about fairness and equity for employees. And that's, I mean, that's just my general comment. I'd like to see this come back with the direction and the research that Ms. Van Miden talked about. But those are some questions that maybe you can address when you come back to us about the waiver in light of a collective bargaining agreement and how many of our hotels are subject to collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you.
Those are my comments.
Thank you.
We will get that information if we come back.
Okay. Councilmember Kusakian. I don't hear...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
I think that, you know, if we're talking about protecting lives or discussing the use of masks, I think it's only fair that we also talk about protecting people's livelihood and their jobs. And I would like to see, at least, in the very least, whatever we do this evening for my colleagues, to consider the layoff and recall procedure protections, to hire back those workers who aren't working now, who after this crisis is over, some individuals may try to take advantage of the situation by not rehiring them back. You know, I know that this city has done more than its fair share of indulging the hotel industry, and I think it's only fair that we now do something to protect those individuals who work in these hotel establishments. So I can understand where, you know, some other areas may need to be hashed out, but I would like to see in the very least for us to protect the workers with a fair layoff and recall procedures.
Thank you. I'm very concerned also with employees of hotels, and I hope they will come back soon and resume their jobs. Anyway, may I have a motion for this item? I guess if there is no...
Maybe just a little bit more specificity, if I could, and I'm not sure...
City Council, City Attorney Mike Garcia, please.
So I heard some general consensus, at least requests from council members on the fair discharge and recall provisions, as well as the, I think I heard it on hospitality worker retention, and then also, obviously, the safety aspect of it. And there is also a preference for qualified discharge employees, which we would incorporate into that, if that's the council direction. One thing I didn't, on the public hygiene training requirements, I'm not sure if the council, I didn't hear anything on that, so we would put that in abeyance while we focus on the other matters. And I think even with respect to the hand-washing aspects of it, it seems like that became less critical, given the status of the hotels at this point. So that's sort of the feedback I heard. I just want to make sure that I'm correct, and those will be the items that we'll put together, but also, obviously, do the outreach, get the information requested by council members as it relates to both the economic impacts, as well as which of these particular hotels in Glendale are, may be represented by a collective bargaining agreement. So that's, I just want to make sure that we're clear that that's sort of the direction you want, you're going to provide this direction to bring back those items as it relates to fair discharge and recall, preference for qualified discharge employees, as well as hospitality worker retention.
So should I have to get a motion?
Oh, and the safety aspect, yeah. So if I can get motion?
I will move that item.
Yes. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Kusakian?
Councilmember Kusakian?
I don't see him here, but councilmember...
I see him.
Kusakian. Are you still there, councilmember Kusakian?
I see he's got a bandwidth issue, so he will come back.
Are you back?
Yes.
Yes? Did you say yes?
No, I don't think that's him.
No. He's not, I guess, I lost him here.
We can either wait or move forward.
So last call, councilmember Kusakian. No. So I will...
Just come and give it one second.
Well, we need to hear from him.
Councilmember Kusakian.
We have a director upon his return to the meeting.
We could do that as well, but then this requires reconsideration. We know he's supporting because he spoke on it.
We are waiting for councilmember Kusakian to join us.
Call in, 818-937-8100.
Just get on the phone.
The lines are open.
We should have him just calling.
They are trying to reach councilmember Kusakian from here. Apparently, majority is in favor of it, so maybe we can ask him to be recorded, his vote recorded at a later time. He's connected? No?
Can we recess for a few seconds?
Ah.
Back on?
Can you recess for a few seconds?
For a few minutes.
Couple minutes.
Couple minutes, okay. We take a recess for a couple of minutes to be connected to our colleagues. We are back. We were discussing item eight, action item eight, and, okay, I think, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rotman.
Councilmember Rotman.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. So what's next, please?
Next item would be 8B, City Attorney, regarding report on filling the vacancy in the city clerk's position. 8B1, motion to appoint an individual to the position of city clerk. 2, motion directing staff on filling city clerk vacancy.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager Yasmin Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council will vote directly to our city attorney, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, following up last week's discussion on filling the vacancy in the city clerk position, council asked us to provide some information on the scope and duties of the role of the city clerk, which is included as exhibits to the report, as well as to bring forward to anybody who had indicated to the city manager, city attorney, who was interested in the position. We've received one letter of interest, which is attached to your packet from Mr. Jemian. And it said, this time council can make an appointment tonight, to appoint any individual who is a Glendale resident and registered voter, or council can provide us further direction on the appointment of the city clerk. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anybody wants to comment on this item, or I go to calls? I guess I have one call.
Go to the calls first.
You are on the air with city council members, city staff.
Yes.
You are on the air with city council members.
Yes, this is Mike Mohill. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Our founding fathers wanted the city treasurer and the city clerk both to be full-time elected officers, and not be appointed and under the thumb of the city manager, nor the city council. Our founding fathers wanted these two positions to be independent and responsible to the people first, and not the city council members, nor the city manager. Councilman Artic Kasakian, who was first elected city clerk in 2005, said the, quote, "Voters have always made the decision that's best for the city." There is a reason that the city clerk's position is elected and is written into the city charter. It's one of the checks and balances on local government, local authority within local government," end of quote. Last week, Councilman Agajanian felt that any appointed person to the city clerk's position now would have the advantage of being an incumbent when the office is open for election in 2022. City Attorney Mike Garcia reminded the councilmen, they cannot make an appointed person promise not to run for election. The same exact argument must apply to the city attorney's position. Election of Glendale voters and not recommended by the city manager and voted by council. The city clerk's position prior to Councilman Artic Kasakian withheld by Doris Touet, who was appointed by council, then ran for election. As long as the person is a Glendale resident, then that is the only qualification. According to Patricia Olds, President of the City Clerk's Association of California, quote, "The position is bound by statutory requirements and a bevy of federal and state laws, and therefore, any political appointees should not be considered," end of quote. Councilmembers, in chambers tonight, you have seen R.M. Ajamian, the records administration analyst within the city clerk's office, performed the work of the city clerk for many, many years, and he would be, he would be the perfect candidate to fill the role of Glendale's newest city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Question for Mr. Mohill, if he's still on the line, Mr. Mayor.
He's not on the line anymore. But he, I'm sure he can hear you, he listened to you.
Maybe he can call in. He seems to know a lot about the city clerk's position. Is he interested in the appointment himself? He's a former city council candidate, knows a lot. Is he, is this a shy way of saying he's interested?
Oh, that I don't know. Anyway, is there any council comment?
I would like to make a comment.
Councilmember Devine.
Thank you, thank you. You know, this is a, another kind of situation that we found ourselves in, and I know that Councilmember Kasakian has nominated his choice for city clerk. I'd like to suggest that each council member should have the opportunity to nominate a candidate of their choice. So in other words, we would have five candidates, candidates that are interested, that are qualified, that we each know would do a good job, kind of like we used to appoint commissioners. You had to have three votes in order to become a commissioner, and this way, whoever, our choice for city clerk would need that many votes. And so I'd just like to throw that idea out to everyone. I'm sure there are people here in our community that would be interested, but in order to keep it at a workable number, I think if each one of us came up with a nominee, and as I say, Councilmember Kasakian has his, and the rest of us come up with one, and then we can choose from the five. So I'd just like to, if any of my colleagues would be interested in a process, we could come up with a process, the staff, with staff, and get this accomplished by the end of the month. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wants to comment, please? R.R. Najarian, councilmember Najarian.
That's a very interesting idea. I know what I don't want to do is what we did last time, and take a very wide range of applications. I think there were about 80, 80 some, if I'm not mistaken. And one was picked, obviously it was Mr. Quintero. So you immediately, you made 80 enemies, longtime enemies for not picking them, because everyone was very much interested in being in the city council. I'm not opposed to that idea of coming forward in a short period of time with, with one nominee, let's say, and then have a discussion on those nominees. I think we should have some sort of back and forth to discuss qualities and the attributes of each potential nominee. So I would support that idea put forth by Ms. Devine.
Before I let any other council members to speak about this item, I want to ask Mr. City Attorney Garcia about, I remember for city council members, we have been told that we cannot appoint somebody, the term is like almost for two years. Is city clerk's office is different than city council office?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the only thing I can refer to is, we previously had a charter provision, which for the council members, and maybe for the clerk or treasurer too, I can't recall, which provided that if there was a, there was a vacancy that was created, and I can't remember the exact language, because we've changed it since then, but if there was a vacancy in one of those offices, the appointment could only be for so long, and then if it was longer, it was going to be longer than a year, or I can't remember, but then it would require a special election. And that's, that's what happened when Councilmember Nukian became the treasurer, and then we had, the council filled that position by appointment, but subsequently, in 2014, we had to have a special election to fill that spot. It was in August of 2014, Councilmember Devine was elected to the election, and it was costly, and it was time consuming, so we, at the 2015 election, I think, we amended that provision of the charter, which basically provided, if somebody's appointed to fill a seat, that person serves until the next general municipal election. So somebody in this seat would be appointed, they would serve until the next general municipal election, which also happens to be the end of the term that Mr. Kasakian was elected to, which would be in 2022. So that's, that's what, that's why we used to have a provision that required a special election sooner than the next general municipal election. We realized it was costly to do that, and so it's, this person who's appointed will serve until 2022.
So there is no difference between city council seat and city clerk's?
No, no, there isn't. Not under the current charter provision.
So at the time, then we could appoint, let's say, Mr. Quintero could stay until the end of the term?
He did. He served, no, he didn't, but he served until the next general municipal election.
Oh, next general election.
Municipal election.
Municipal election, okay. Is there any comment from any other council member? Mr. Rotman?
I mean, I'm not opposed to looking at other candidates and taking a little bit of time if we have it. I just don't know, I mean, I guess we only had one person express interest. I don't know if there's anybody else out there. That's it. The other, you know, the other thing that I raised in, well, earlier on at some conversations was about, you know, bringing somebody back in, you know, somebody is working for the city now, and they go off to do this job. I understand there's, there's some risk of kind of reentry, and, you know, that's something I don't know how many people that are currently working for the city are willing to do, so that might limit our pool, but, you know, I don't know. I would, I would like that we find somebody that we, you know, believe will not only have, you know, have the experience, be able to do a good job, and also, you know, not run in the next election. And I, I think R.M.'s, I think has expressed that, so I'm comfortable with that choice, but if we want to take a little bit of time, I'm not opposed either.
Okay, councilmember Kasakian.
Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, and fellow council members. I think that it's an interesting point that Councilmember Devine brings up, but I think that, you know, we have a candidate, and it's not someone I've recommended in terms of, or endorsed, other than the fact that Mr. Ajamian is someone who, working in the city clerk's office, when I was still serving as city clerk, if God forbid, something had happened to me, he was the person through succession that would have succeeded me and filled that role. So, you know, just based on just our city, our very own structures as a city, it's who we as an organization have prepared for this moment. He's expressed in writing that he will not seek the position, so I think the concern that it's going to be, the fix will be in for the next election is off the table, although we know that we cannot require anyone to not run, and that is fair, and it is right, and it is our law. However, he, I believe, is a person of faith, an honest person with integrity, and I take him for his written word, which is part of the staff report this evening. I think the idea to bring in other individuals may complicate things. Questions that would arise is, you know, what interests have these individuals expressed in the operations before? There have been multiple recruitments for various positions in the city clerk's office over the years, and whether it's someone internally, externally, there haven't been any applicants that have come forward at this juncture with this opportunity, and I think that taking this forward, given all the other issues that we as a council are facing in the middle of this crisis, I think the prudent thing that I would urge my fellow council members to do would be to move ahead, at least with the appointment of someone who organizationally, institutionally, has the experience and the knowledge, and will steady the ship and move it forward until such time when the voters vote someone into this position.
Okay, thank you. So now we don't have any clear path as to what we want to do. Is there any way we can postpone this until a week or two? Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so the council has until April 30th to appoint somebody, or else be required to call a special election. So we have a meeting on the 28th, and the council could always call a special meeting at any time between that, including the 21st, which is next week, when we don't have a regularly scheduled meeting. So it's really up to the council how to move forward.
Anybody in favor of the idea to postpone this and see whom, I mean, the way the ideas were floating around, and I don't know where we stand.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please. Councilmember Devine.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Maybe we can take the two weeks, the four other council members to ask our constituents, find out if there is someone that would like to take this position, and then in two weeks we can come back with an answer, yes, we have three or four candidates, or no, we have none, and that will be the end of the issue.
Is this something other candidates are considering?
Pardon? Were you talking about a pardon?
No, I'm talking to all council members, if they want to go ahead and postpone this for two weeks, as you have mentioned. Councilmember Najarian.
Wow. You're Mayor Agajanian, that's what I, they pay you the big bucks to be mayor. What do you think? We haven't heard from you.
I think, let's postpone this for two weeks. I'm in favor of postponing until next, I mean, next time, whenever the next time is.
So would it be fair to say that if, if I were to have a candidate, that I could bring that name forward at our next meeting in two weeks for consideration?
I don't know.
I could, it would be, I mean, it would be by motion, and it would be agendized appropriately, as well as anyone could, if Mr. Ajamian would be nominated. There could be other nominations and a discussion, and a vote would ensue, I presume.
Well, I don't know. I want to hear others, if, how we have to formulate.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney, maybe he heard us, and maybe he will help us.
Well, again, given that we, you know, we only have one regular meeting, a couple issues come to mind. If we're going to be, if council members are going to be bringing the names at that meeting and having the discussion. One is, if there's no consensus reached at that meeting, we start to get real close to that April 30th meeting. The other thing is, the other issue might be the process to verify that they do meet the qualifications, which they'd be a Glendale resident. which they'd be a Glendale resident and a registered voter in Glendale. If we're doing that on the 28th and if the council appoints somebody and then for whatever reason it turns out they don't meet that qualification, we run into a problem. So it might be advisable to have a meeting next week on the 21st for the council to do the outreach that they feel they want to do and see if there are other candidates, if that's the direction you want to go. And then you can have that initial discussion. You can even make an appointment on the 21st, but then there's at least time to do the verification after the fact if we need to and have another discussion on the 28th. So that would be our, that would be our input on that particular issue. We do have two weeks. We probably be advisable, given the importance of the decision, to use both of those Tuesdays to have some buffer in case we need further discussion.
Is that the direction we want to go, council members? We have phone calls. Maybe we take the phone?
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question.
Councilmember Kasaken, Councilmember Kasaken.
Thank you, thank you. I fail to see why, like, we're overthinking this. And perhaps my colleagues can enlighten me as to why. And I'd also like to ask the city attorney as to, if for whatever reason that we're at an impasse by the time this comes back at the next meeting. And there's no clear consensus because there's been four or five candidates now thrown into this pool. What then happens? What must the city do according to our rules and laws?
Well, if we come back on the 28th and there's no, you know, there is no consensus, we, the council will still have the 29th and the 30th to, you know, have special meetings and if necessary to make a decision.
And if there is no consensus then?
By the 30th. Our view of the charter is that requires an appointment by the 30th. If no appointment is made by the 30th, the council is required to call a special election and fill the position by special election. So 30th is the last.
Now, what is the approximate cost of that special election?
Councilmember Kasaken, we haven't gotten a direct estimate, but we were informed by the county that it would be in the ballpark of the estimate they gave us last year when we requested what it would cost to have a special election in November of last year to fill Councilman Sanani's seat. And that was over a million dollars.
And also, there's been some comments about an estimate of 500,000. So anywhere, let's say, anywhere between half a million to a million dollars. Would that be accurate?
That's safe to say. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess I have phone calls. Maybe we go to the phone calls, right?
That's for oral.
Oh, these are for oral communication. I'm sorry. Okay. On this item, we do not have any calls. All right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, please.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, Mr. Brodmann.
I just want, I'm not absolutely clear on what we're waiting for. I mean, what's going to happen during this time? So are, and maybe I'll ask, you know, Councilmember Devine or anybody else, are, do we know of any people that are interested? Or are you, is this kind of theoretical? That we could find some people to nominate? I'm just, I'm just not really sure where we are. I don't know of any other candidate, but maybe you do.
Well, I, if I may, I think it just behooves us to see if there is any interest in the community and if we can find another qualified candidate or maybe three. And then we can at least have a choice of candidates. I'm sure that you might have someone that's interested in taking this position, Mr. Brodmann.
I have anybody at the moment, but I just, it's possible. I was approached by someone today who was a serious candidate and who expressed an interest. I'll look back with you, Frank, hold on. But no, in all seriousness, I was contacted today by someone who wanted his slash her name submitted. And I just, I'm not ready to do that now. I need to do a little due diligence on my own part in that regard.
All right. So where we stand now, so maybe City Attorney can help us a little bit.
21st, is the council okay with the 21st to have a special meeting on the 21st? And then the council can bring forward any names that they?
What will happen on 28th? If we would do it on 28th, like a regular meeting?
Right. We could do it on the 28th, but our concern is that that's the last regular meeting before the 30th deadline. If there, for whatever reason, there's no consensus. And also, given the fact that you might be bringing forward the names on the 28th and we wouldn't have had the opportunity to verify that they meet the minimum qualifications for the position, we just feel it would be appropriate to give yourselves the extra buffer of that extra meeting to have that discussion.
Nice. Okay. So now, council members, April 21st or April 28th?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Councilmember Kasaken.
So if I understand correctly, if the name, the only name that has expressed interest and who's before us this evening, if a motion is pushed, put forth for the approval of this, my understanding is that my colleagues would not vote for a qualified candidate to fill this position who's worked for the city for over 19 years and have committed themselves to not running for the seat on the next election. Because if that's the case, I'm happy to put it to a vote right now and make that nomination or put forward the appointment of Mr. Agajanian. But if we're going to play political football and we want to, you know, bring up these folks in the community that have had these conversations but have not approached the city attorney or the city manager, and I'm assuming are aware of the situation, we can do that as well. But in the absence of that, I'd like to put forth the name of Arm Agajanian for, to fill the position of city clerk during a time of a citywide emergency until such time when there is the next Glendale general municipal election. That is my motion.
Is there a second? No.
Technically, it doesn't need a second.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't need a second as a nomination, but.
No, he was offering how to proceed, I guess, no?
He was nominating.
He was nominating somebody.
Oh, I'm sorry. So then?
So do they take a vote?
Well, the only thing is that the motion is, you know, it's not like, the nomination is not the only item before the council. The question is whether to nominate and appoint somebody or whether to continue it, so.
Mr. City Attorney, I believe there are several options before us before we take nominations and vote. The council has to make that determination. I agree that a nomination does not need a second, but we haven't decided that we're going to sit here today and take nominations. So I would move that we come back on the 28th and we submit any names to the city attorney for referencing their eligibility before that date comes. Is that, I mean, is that a day or two, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, correct.
And so before that date, so they're pre-screened and pre-qualified? And that we hold a attempt to vote for a city clerk, a city clerk on the 28th? That's my motion that we handle that one.
No, I need.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and seconded by Councilmember Devine. So now we have to take it.
Correct. So that motion is to continue this discussion to the 28th? If council members have any candidates, they would submit the name of that person to our office so that we can verify they meet the voter registration requirement. And then that item will become forward to you on the 28th. I wasn't clear, is it going to be one council member making a nomination, one individual, or it would just be at that point, council members would be able to bring forward candidates and you have that discussion on the 28th?
So are we going to nominate?
One candidate per council member.
As the maker of the motion, are you okay with that, Mr. Councilmember Najarian?
Councilmember Najarian?
I would agree with that motion or that amendment, friendly amendment.
And what if someone is not approached by a council member?
Did you get? Mr. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Ardi, can you repeat the question, please?
What if someone's name is not submitted by a council member? Why should a council member be the one to submit names?
That's the process the council wants to choose. They can do so. And any individual who's interested could always reach out to council members and say, "I'm interested." And then the council member can then decide whether to put that name forward as their nominee.
So the only avenue is through a council member to submit interest?
That's the motion.
Express interest.
I'm not.
That is the motion.
So.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Brodmann.
Yeah, so I'm just a little unclear. Are we, would we be given time between when these names are presented and when we have to vote? For instance, I know Mr., I don't know if I can pronounce it, Agajanian? I know Mr. Agajanian. I know his work. I mean, I would feel comfortable, you know, supporting this candidacy. There may be other names that get put on the table in two weeks. I don't even know who these people are. Wouldn't it be important that we get to interview this person or in some way learn more about the person before we're asked to place a vote? And so maybe on that, we could meet next week? I don't know, or put the names in next week and then have, and then meet again to actually make the vote? I'm just, I don't know what the right process is. But I feel like I would need time before hearing a name and deciding whether that's somebody I want to support.
So Mr. City Clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's, that's a, that part of the process, the council will have to decide whether you want to require the names to be submitted, you know, at some point before the 28th. Obviously, it would have to be time for the verification process, but the council is going to have to provide further direction on that particular point.
So, okay, now, should I take a vote now?
Well, I just want, I think we want to make sure everybody's questions are answered.
Okay, is there, yes, Councilmember Brodmann.
Can I follow up on what I said? I mean, I think, anyway, for me, it would be helpful to, you know, see a resume. And ideally have somebody actually come and, we could call it an interview or whatever. But anyway, somebody come in front of us and maybe answer some questions. Otherwise, it's just a name. I don't know how we do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Devine.
Yes, I think Councilmember Brodmann makes a good point. And perhaps we can have a special meeting on the 27th and call them all in on that, however many. We may not even have it. There may not, who knows what we're going to have. But call them in, have a special meeting on the 27th, and then we'll be able to make the decision and meet them and talk to them, question them, interview them, and then make our decision on the 28th. So that gives us adequate time to reach out to our constituents. You know, it's just like looking for a commissioner, except now we're looking for a city clerk. And this is where we find out if there's anyone out there that we would consider this appointment. So I agree. I think we need to have the process in place where we actually meet and interview the candidates.
Okay, thank you. So where we stand now, Mr. City Attorney? So maybe you can help us on this issue.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what I heard from Councilmember Devine is a request that the, there be a special meeting on the 27th for the, any interest, the council members to bring forward the names of the candidates that they're interested in, want to nominate. And then the council can make a decision on the 28th and have the opportunity to interview them as well.
Okay. Is that the motion now?
I would second that motion or the amendment to the original motion, whichever it is.
Okay. Well, we'll treat that as an amendment to your motion, Mr. Councilmember Najarian.
Then I will accept that amendment.
All right. Your own call, please.
So wait, before we?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, councilman.
Can I understand what I'm potentially voting on?
Can you explain, Mr. City Attorney, what we are voting on?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what we heard was council members will be reaching out to or can be reached out to as relates to potential nominees for the city clerk vacancy. We will have a special meeting on the 27th of April for the council to put forth the names of individuals that they want to nominate. And then on the 28th, the council will make the decision.
Is it clear now? Councilmember Kasaken?
As long as what I'm understanding is that these names come through council members, correct?
Yes.
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 Okay.
And may I ask for, oh, sorry.
And this is different than last week when we were tasked with giving staff direction? So this is a departure from that essentially and injecting council members into this process?
In my opinion, it's very different, isn't it?
It is different, but it is, you know, the council has the full discretion to choose the policy upon which it makes the appointment.
Okay. And may I clarify something?
Yes, Mr. Brodmann, Councilmember Brodmann.
So at this special meeting on the 27th, the names will be presented and those individuals will be present to answer questions? Or will we be, will we get those names in advance and the resumes and be able to at least, you know, have had a few minutes to look through those resumes first and think of questions that we want to ask? And I guess I'm suggesting I would prefer a little bit more time.
Yeah, the ideal situation for this to work would be for the council members to provide us the names that we can include in the report that's coming to you on the 27th. We can also do the verification part of it. And then those names will be presented in the report on the 27th. Any of the people who are being nominated could, they'll be formally nominated at the, I guess, at the meeting on the 27th, but those candidates could then come to the meeting or participate via WebEx. And then the council could make the decision on the 28th or can make the decision on the 27th.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Attorney, I just want to make one amendment to this, that the current name that has submitted interest without having done so through a council person, at least be considered among whoever my colleagues bring forth as well.
Absolutely. Well, you know, to be fair, you put his name forth already, yes, last week. So that was before he wrote a letter. So let's, the council are going to vote on this. So clearly, we should be able to bring someone forward that we feel would be a good city clerk. So I don't know why we're trying to make that distinction.
I think the distinction is an important one because we asked staff, we asked staff to bring forth names. And staff has submitted as part of this report a name. And now I think council members are being asked to be involved in the appointment of another elected seat, which has partially some oversight in the process by which we are elected.
I mean, I think Agajanian should be the winner by default because no one else sent a letter to the city manager? Because I'm not for that.
Well, and if I may, I don't remember us asking for names. Well, and if I may, I don't remember us asking for names of potential appointments from staff.
We were directed to bring back anybody who.
Okay, I'm sorry, let's see the.
What I want is a repeat of what we went through with the council vacancy, which I don't think anyone on this dais wants to repeat and see.
And that's why we were.
Drawn out. So what was it that specifically was council's direction? What brought forth this report this week, Madam City Manager and the Attorney?
We got direction last week to bring back names of anybody who expressed an interest, also a discussion of the qualifications for the position, but obviously, the report is still, you know, open-ended and the council is free to provide any direction on the process that they so choose.
As with any report for that matter, as with every single report that's come before us, I mean, council gets options, and one of the options is to do whatever council wants. I just want to be clear as to what, how we got here today. So I did bring up Mr. Agemian's name, Councilmember Najarian, but I did so as part of an overall discussion in terms of qualified candidates, but I did so as someone who is familiar with city clerk operations.
And that's fine, I'm not sure I could answer that, but that's fine.
I can't change the fact that I'm a former city clerk and now a council member.
I guess I have to stop this, so we have, I guess, the Mr. City Attorney. Are we clear what we want to vote on?
Yes, and although, I guess always additional clarification can, maybe I can restate it.
Yes.
So we typically send out the, we try to set out the agendas the week before, so it would be ideal if the council members who intend to make nominations could get us the names by the previous Tuesday, so the 21st, so we can include that. Obviously, we have a little, we might have a little bit of leeway on that timetable, and that could be included, and then the council can then have that discussion on the 27th with any of the folks that are having their name put in, can come to the meeting or participate via WebEx, and then council can then conclude that portion of the meeting and then have the discussion, the deliberation on the 28th. I believe that's the direction that I heard, that's the motion that I heard, as has been amended a couple of times by Councilmembers Najarian and Councilmember Divine.
Are we clear now? But, okay, I think we have a roll call, I think, right?
Yeah.
Are we clear? Everything is clear?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brockman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item would be oral communications, discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda, council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you, let's turn to the phones and address to any callers. You are on the air with city council and city staff, please. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, yes.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian?
Yes.
How are you talking to me when you're reading something? Oh, that was a clerk, I'm sorry, okay.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
I have coronavirus casualty to report. I have bad news. Last week, March 8th, another mature oak tree was destroyed at 2562, 2566 East Chevy Chase Drive. The city of Glendale excavated the entire 50-foot circum fence root system that was holding the tree and just left the massive tree stuck out of a little dirt, imagine. So I, my public announcement is that Sicomoro Canyon tract oaks are indigenous and protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You are on the air with city council and city staff.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Sorry, the feed lags a little bit, so I was a little caught unaware. Yes, thank you, and I wanted to call this evening to thank you for the actions you have taken thus far to ensure the safety of our residents as the crisis around COVID-19 progresses. I want to thank in particular Ara for going live on Facebook last week and today to address our residents and communicate with them directly and answer their questions. I want to reiterate my call to the council for a rent and mortgage moratorium. According to experts, without such a measure, then we are going to see an enormous surge in homelessness. Harvard University's Joint Center for Housing Studies has found that a third of our residents spend more than half their income on rent, and this is during, when our economy is running as normal. Tenants who have lost all or part of their income have now had to pay April rent. If they chose to pay it, this will, this will have been some family's last cash. So I encourage the city to either, one, take direct action by enacting a moratorium, or, two, issue a resolution calling on the governor to mandate a moratorium on rents and mortgages. What the city has done thus far to protect renters is good in the immediate term, no one is getting kicked out. However, harmful in the long term, debt and displacement. The city must proactively either enact a moratorium on rents and mortgages, citing the California Constitution's emergency powers, which at least according to the law foundation of Silicon Valley, they have the power to do so, or issue a resolution calling on the governor. Included in the same act or resolution, of course, must be a call on our state and federal governments to prioritize stimulus aid to our municipalities so that essential services, which we all rely upon, are not interrupted. On a bike ride through the city yesterday, I saw utility workers on Glendale Boulevard that reminded me of the reliable institution we have in Glendale Water and Power. Please do everything you can to keep our city housed and whole, no debt and no displacement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You are on the air with city council and city staff. Hello.
Hello.
Yes, you are on the air.
Hi, this is Karen Quark, and I'm so glad I'm talking to you late at night at the end of a long meeting when no one paying attention, because no one ever pays attention to water issues anyway. How do I know this? Up to 70% of Glendale's water is supplied by the Metropolitan Water District. The Metropolitan Water District had its monthly board meeting today where they voted on a significant issue, their two-year budget, not an annual budget, but a two-year budget. And in this budget, which was approved as option one, are the water rates that they charge to member agencies is going to go up by 3% next year and by 4% in 2022. And at this crucial vote, Glendale was completely unrepresented. The chair from Glendale was sitting empty, and Glendale deserves better than this, or water supply deserves better than this. I know you have a lot of issues on your plate right now, but we cannot neglect our water, especially at a time when our first line of defense against this virus is to constantly wash our hands. So please help us secure our water supply, and please make sure that unreasonable rate increases are not assessed on the population, which seriously cannot afford this right now, by making sure that Glendale is fairly represented at the body that supplies 70% of our water. I brought this same issue up to council last year, and our chair from Glendale sat empty for four months while you waited to appoint a replacement. Please allow Glendale to have better service than that. They might discuss the issue of possible budget cuts by the end of August. Please make sure that Glendale has a representative in that chair by then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You are on the air with city council and city staff.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. My name is Kenny Ull, and I am a resident of Northwest Glendale. I am calling in to strongly urge the city to prioritize the safety of pedestrians during the COVID-19 pandemic. A myriad of cities have already automated the pedestrian signal. For instance, the city of Los Angeles's Department of Transportation is initially deploying these changes in areas with high volumes of pedestrian activity, but will soon expand them to other regions. Furthermore, the city of Burbank has automated their pedestrian and cyclist signal daily between 6:30 a.m. and 10 p.m. To conclude, I would like to emphasize that switching the pedestrian signals in the city, or at least the ones in high pedestrian areas in Glendale, to hands-free or automatic would prevent people from touching the buttons and potentially contracting and spreading COVID-19. It would also prevent them from dangerously crossing an intersection against the traffic signal. Today, we are seeing more people walking in the neighborhoods to get fresh air and to keep healthy. Pedestrians shouldn't have to push big buttons to cross the street in the first place. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. You are on the air with city council and city staff.
Hello.
Yes.
Yes, good evening, city council and staff. My name is Annette Galustian, and I'm calling to express concerns over two changes to the city's public order number 2020-06. First, the removal of the requirement for a tenant to demonstrate an inability to pay rent due to COVID-19. Second, the extension of a tenant's repayment plan to span the period of 12 months upon the expiration of the local emergency period. While I understand that these are extremely difficult times for everyone, I feel that there is a misconception that most or all landlords are sitting on a pile of cash and won't have any liquidity problems, paying not only for their commercial mortgages but also for the daily operating cost of a property, even if they can't collect a penny in rental income. If a tenant is unable to pay rent, at the very least, they should be willing and able to demonstrate so to the landlord through documentation. I don't know why any tenant would not want to provide documentation from their place of employment or otherwise to substantiate their inability to pay rent. On the contrary, those tenants who may be staunchly opposed to providing documentation may simply be trying to get a free ride thanks to the city of Glendale. By way of illustration, I had a tenant who did not pay their April rent, nor did this tenant even write or call to advise of the same. When I finally emailed the tenant to ask about the missing rent, I received the following reply, and I quote, "A few days ago, I had dreamed that you forgive the April rent," parentheses, "I'm just kidding, but who knows, it could be real in a few days. However, for now, I'm able to send half of the rent and another half in a week. So is this okay for you?" End quote. When I asked the same tenant for documentation of an inability to pay, I received no response. And when I followed up, the tenant informed me that he had sent the check in the mail and it arrived, paid in full. During this time, when evictions are not permitted, and understandably so, to deny any landlord the right to request and receive some sort of documentation evidencing a tenant's inability to pay rent is simply asinine. It provides tenants with a carte blanche to do as they please with no repercussions and no questions asked. Secondly, by implementing a 12-month repayment program, the city council is essentially mandating that landlords become de facto lenders without even an understanding if this would be financially feasible. While the CARES Act provides forbearance for landlords with federally backed mortgages, most landlords have commercial loans with private bank lenders who may not agree to forbear these monthly loans. I don't know if certain council members are simply uninformed about these facts or affair choosing to disregard the serious consequences that may also impact landlords when making these difficult decisions. So how does the city intend to address the ripple effect and hardships created upon landlords as a result of the city's decision to allow tenants to not pay rent? And how will the city assist landlords if tenants decide to terminate their tenancies prior to their repayment deadline and simply move out without paying these obligations? Will the city also allow tenants and landlords to have 12 months to repay their Glendale Water and Power and Public Works or Waste Management bills with no interest or fees? Will the city of Glendale offer additional trash pickups for all residents in the city similar to city of Los Angeles's recent actions? And will the city of Glendale dedicate a portion of its budget to assist Glendale renters similar to the city of Los Angeles's newly unveiled Angelino Cards program? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. You are on the air with city council and city staff.
Hello.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, my name is Archie Malik. I've got two questions for you. If I make qualified candidate for the city clerk, why I have to come and see one of your council member, and I cannot go directly to the city clerk's office and give my application over there? If, if I don't know anybody on the city council member, and if there's a bias there, they would not take my candidacy. I think it's not fair to the people not just go to the city council and not go directly and give their candidacy. That's my first question. My second question is regarding a mandatory face mask. I wonder why, from federal, state, local, county, all health experts, they never recommended having a face mask all the time, driving, walking in the park, and now you guys are becoming the biggest health experts, and mandatory to have a face mask when I'm driving next to my wife? I think this is not right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Just on last question, we did not say that you have to have a mask while you're driving, am I right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, Members of the city council. The order does not include having to have a face cover on while in a vehicle of your own. You would have to have a face cover on if you were going to ride public transit, such as the Beeline bus, the MTA bus, et cetera, but not in your own vehicle.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
It'd be adjournment.
Adjournment, okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. With that said, this meeting is adjourned at 9:31 p.m., so we see you guys next time. Thank you.